President Trump dice che la persecuzione e il uccidere di cristiani in Nigeria è "genocidio". Altri dicono che non sia così semplice, ma non c'è dubbio che Nigeria abbia un problema significativo con i massimi uccidimenti e kidnappamenti di sia cristiani che musulmani da più di 10 anni. In questa settimana, sono state aggiunte altre due abduzioni massiciste nelle scuole del nord e occidente. Centinaia di bambini sono stati presi da una scuola cattolica ieri. Un biskupista sta richiedendo azione lì.
Senza una breve intervista, il cristianismo rischia l'eliminazione di parte di Nigeria nord e medio in molto breve tempo. L' 教練 alone non può fermare gli uccidimenti. Ciò richiede una intervista coordinata politica, militare e umanitaria. Signor presidente e membri, il sangue del cristiano prezioso che Cristo ha dato a voi, non possiamo permettervi di aspettare più.
Abbiamo messo in piedi il reverendo padre Romelius Ahula della diocese di Makurdi in Nigeria. È anche il direttore della fondazione "Justice Development and Peace". La pace sembra essere in mancanza di tempo in vostro Paese.
Grazie John per avermi invitato. E vorrei ringraziarti molto per questo piattaforma. In realtà non c'è pace. Anche se ho sentito la fondazione "Justice Development and Peace", abbiamo notato da molti anni, abbiamo visto da molti anni i uccidimenti e le abduzioni come descrive il giudice. Vengo dal stato di Benue, che è parte del medio centro di Nigeria, dove abbiamo documentato questi uccidimenti da 2001. Quindi non sono solo 10 anni come le persone vogliono riferirsi. Forse il picking degli uccidimenti e delle abduzioni può essere ridotto a 10 anni, ma abbiamo documentazione sistematica di questi uccidimenti che hanno avuto lugar di 2001, quando la chiesa cattolica nella diocese ha aperto e ha trasportato eternamente i campi dei cittadini. Quindi abbiamo esperienza di questi uccidimenti e trasposizioni da molti, molti anni. Non sono solo 10 anni.
Quelle 350 ragazze scuole che sono state kidnappate, che succedono? Cioè, quali sono le possibilità di liberarle, pensate?
Molto poco, mi dispiace dire. E dico molto poco perché questo non è il primo. Se avete seguito l' storia di Nigeria nel passato recente, le ragazze scuole sono state kidnappate nel 2014. Nel 2015 altre sono state kidnappate. C'è una ragazza famosa che è stata kidnappata a Dapchi insieme a altre ragazze, che si chiama Lia Sharibu. Non è stata ritrovata dai suoi genitori, dalla sua famiglia fin adesso. Molti altri che sono stati kidnappati come questo non sono stati ritrovati. Quindi, mi dispiace dirlo, ma penso che le possibilità siano molto basse. Perché questi islamisti, quello che fanno è che o sposano queste ragazze giovani o li trasportano a altri paesi arabi. Siamo in grado di sapere che Libia è un punto di transito. Nell' stato mio c'era un caso l'ultima settimana di alcune ragazze che furono trafficate a quei posti. E quindi molte di loro saranno vendute o molte di loro saranno sposate a questi militanti.
Abbiamo una mappa che mostra la situazione in vostro Paese. Il nord è molto islamico, la parte media del Paese è un po' di un bagno misto, e il sud è predominantemente cristiano. Ma notiamo le località dei hotbeds Boko Haram. Boko Haram è forse il peggior offenders, non è vero? Quando si tratta di violenza contro i cristiani?
Quando è iniziato Boko Haram, era il peggior offender di violenza contro i cristiani. È iniziato nel nord-est del nostro Paese, in un posto chiamato Borunu. Quando è iniziato nel 2000, erano i gruppi islamici più mortali. Come vi parlo oggi, il gruppo islamico più mortale sarà il Milito etnico fulani che opera nel medio centro del Paese dove hai citato. E hai la foto molto bene. Quindi i militanti fulani, dicono i loro numeri, sono armati con AK-47, arrivano con motociclette, circondano le città, trasportano molte persone, uccidono il più possibile. Sono sicuro che sappiate cosa è successo quest'anno in mio stato. È solo qualche chilometro da casa capitale di Makurdi, in questa città chiamata Yalwata, dove sono venuti urlando "Allahu Akbar" e hanno ucciso oltre 270 persone. Ho i nomi di ogni individuo che è stato ucciso in quel giorno. Quindi questo non sta accadendo solo nel stato di Benue. Inoltre, il stato Platu ha stato molto colpito da questo militante etnico fulani. Quindi è vero che Boko Haram è mortale, ma nei ultimi 10 anni, o 12 a 10 anni, i militanti fulani hanno superato Boko Haram in quanto brutalità degli uccidimenti che stanno facendo e cose del genere.
Sì, tanto per la chiamata religione della pace. Reverendo padre Romelius Ahula, ci auguriamo che tutto va bene e ci richiediamo forza e prieri mentre continuate...
Grazie John, grazie per averci dato questa piattaforma perché molte volte le nostre storie sono state stifate e nessuno vuole prendere le nostre notizie. Quindi, grazie per averci dato questa piattaforma. E ringrazio il Presidente Trump che ha portato questo al punto di vista di tutto il mondo. Penso che con la sua intervista, Nigeria discute questo argomento e il mondo sta discutendo questo argomento. Grazie molto.
Il Presidente degli Stati Uniti è sul vostro canto e questo certamente aiuta. Grazie. Presidente Trump dice che la persecuzione e il uccidere di cristiani in Nigeria...
Ho fatto qualcosa di crimine? La risposta è no. Non ho commesso nessun crimine. Sto combattendo per la libertà del mio popolo come contenente nella Costituzione di Bissou, chiamata Nigeria. Non ho fatto nulla di sbagliato. Ecco perché dopo due anni non riuscirono a dimostrare alcun caso. Anche fino ad ora, siamo ancora in tribunale, non possono dimostrare alcun caso. E le persone parlano come se fossero così moroni che un animale è meglio di loro. Dicono che mi insultano, mi insultano perché non puoi ragionare correttamente. Non ho fatto nulla di sbagliato. Chiamare l'istituzione o dovrebbe essere dire l'arresto di Biafra è dentro le provisioni della Costituzione del Feroz del Nigeria. È molto chiaro e lungo. È lì, vai a controllarlo tu stesso. E tu mi chiedi di essere felice invece di essere upset che sono arrestato. Ho commesso qualcosa di crimine? Ho commesso qualcosa di crimine? La risposta è no. Non ho commesso nessun crimine. Sto combattendo per la libertà del mio popolo come contenente nella Costituzione di Bissou, chiamata Nigeria. Non ho fatto nulla di sbagliato. Ecco perché dopo due anni non riuscirono a dimostrare alcun caso. Anche fino ad ora, siamo ancora in tribunale, non possono dimostrare alcun caso. E le persone parlano come se fossero così moroni che un animale è meglio di loro. Dicono che mi insultano, mi insultano perché non puoi ragionare correttamente. Non ho fatto nulla di sbagliato. Chiamare l'istituzione o dovrebbe essere dire l'arresto di Biafra è dentro le provisioni della Costituzione del Feroz del Nigeria. È molto chiaro e lungo. È lì, vai a controllarlo tu stesso. E tu mi chiedi di essere felice invece di essere upset che sono arrestato. Ho commesso qualcosa di crimine? Ho commesso qualcosa di crimine? La risposta è no. Non ho commesso nessun crimine. Sto combattendo per la libertà del mio popolo come contenente nella Costituzione di Bissou, chiamata Nigeria. Non ho fatto nulla di sbagliato. Ecco perché dopo due anni non riuscirono a dimostrare alcun caso. Anche fino ad ora, siamo ancora in tribunale, non possono dimostrare alcun caso. E le persone parlano come se fossero così moroni che un animale è meglio di loro. Dicono che mi insultano, mi insultano perché non puoi ragionare correttamente. Non ho fatto nulla di sbagliato. Chiamare l'istituzione o dovrebbe essere dire l'arresto di Biafra è dentro le provisioni della Costituzione del Feroz del Nigeria. È molto chiaro e lungo. È lì, vai a controllarlo tu stesso. E tu mi chiedi di essere felice invece di essere upset che sono arrestato. Ho commesso qualcosa di crimine? Ho commesso qualcosa di crimine? La risposta è no. Non ho commesso nessun crimine. Sto combattendo per la libertà del mio popolo come contenente nella Costituzione di Bissou, chiamata Nigeria. Non ho fatto nulla di sbagliato. Ecco perché dopo due anni non riuscirono a dimostrare alcun caso. Anche fino ad ora, siamo ancora in tribunale, non possono dimostrare alcun caso. E le persone parlano come se fossero così moroni che un animale è meglio di loro. Dicono che mi insultano, mi insultano perché non puoi ragionare correttamente. Non ho fatto nulla di sbagliato. Chiamare l'istituzione o dovrebbe essere dire l'arresto di Biafra è dentro le provisioni della Costituzione del Feroz del Nigeria. È molto chiaro e lungo. È lì, vai a controllarlo tu stesso. E tu mi chiedi di essere felice invece di essere upset che sono arrestato. Ho commesso qualcosa di crimine? Ho commesso qualcosa di crimine? La risposta è no. Non ho commesso nessun crimine. Sto combattendo per la libertà del mio popolo come contenente nella Costituzione di Bissou, chiamata Nigeria. Non ho fatto nulla di sbagliato. Ecco perché dopo due anni non riuscirono a dimostrare alcun caso. Anche fino ad ora, siamo ancora in tribunale, non possono dimostrare alcun caso. E le persone parlano come se fossero così moroni che un animale è meglio di loro. Dicono che mi insultano, mi insultano perché non puoi ragionare correttamente. Non ho fatto nulla di sbagliato. Chiamare l'istituzione o dovrebbe essere dire l'arresto di Biafra è dentro le provisioni...
As long as we come on air every evening, the whole world must listen. As long as we preach this very gospel, Chukoku Okike Abiyama must be with us. Therefore, without any further hesitation, we must proceed to offer every prayer to Chuku Okike Abiyama who decided in heaven. This gospel of redemption, a gospel of hope, a gospel of restoration, a gospel of renewal, this very gospel of freedom, this very gospel of emancipation as only you ordained. That this very gospel must be preached, that mankind may be set free from the eternal damnation of the creation of the British. My goodness me, I want to remain in the spirit because we must worship heaven. We answer your name, oh Lord of hosts. Everything about us is designed to offer glory unto thee. We have atoned for our sins last year. This very year we have not only atoned for our sins, we have spilled, we have shed blood, they have shed our blood. We have let our sacrifice be made unto thee. Even on the 3rd year of August, as we are being felled by the bullets of the enemy, by the workers of iniquity and of darkness, we remain very strong today to beckon upon thee, to ask you for your mercy and for your grace, to ensure that your kingdom is restored upon the face of the earth, that you can bring your healing hand to bear upon the life of those of them that you created for one singular purpose and that purpose alone, which is to worship you in truth and in every honesty. Is there any way that we have heard? Is there any way that our ancestors may have seen? We confess before a congregation of the whole of humanity to ask you, oh Lord of hosts, to have mercy upon us. You must have mercy upon us. We have suffered enough. We have been subjugated enough. We have been tortured enough. We have been imprisoned enough. We did not do these people anything. Our only crime is to answer your name. Our only crime is to be born your children. Our only crime is to excel at everything that we place our hands into. Our only crime is to exhibit your glory and your blessing, which manifestedly is upon our lives every blessed day. That is why they want to kill us. That is why the British want to join those of them who don't know you, to destroy your creation and your inheritance. You will not allow shame to befall your name. You will not allow the enemies to triumph over the lives of your children because you created us to exist, to worship, to honor and to praise you. That is exactly what we are going to do when this Biafra comes. It will come in truth and in every honesty because we remain every blessed day. Is there any way that we have sinned that you cannot forgive us, our trespasses, to enable us to fulfill your own word which was spoken thousands of years ago, that instead of what you promised not to come to pass, that heaven and earth wishes to exist? You opened your mouth, Chukoku Kika Abiamah, to bless mankind to the coming of Yahweheshua, who came here and said, "Let your kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven." Those words can never be in vain because they are anchored upon your holiness and your magnificence. That is why in the end we know that Biafra will come, that these children that we have given birth to all over the world and their children and their children and their children, as long as they give birth to them and they are Biafrans, they will worship you in truth and honesty. Through this very work we are doing, mankind will come to understand you. Let your miracle be ralphed in our lives. Let us witness and behold your magnificence, your holiness, your mystery and your grace under our command. Oh Lord of hosts, we call upon you. We call upon you to heal. We call upon you to provide succour to those of them who are inconsolable. We ask you to come and strengthen those who are weak. We ask you to restore hope where there is hopelessness. We ask you for inclusion where there is destitution. We ask you for one brotherhood, one camaraderie, one bone, one blood and one flesh of your children, the Ephics and the Bibios, the Isan, the Shekiri, the Isobos and also those of them from Isoko. We are traveling all the way to the lands of Egala. We are moving on from there to Idoma, to Iggede, to the territories of the Ibo land. All these places we dedicate unto thee. All these lands of yours, we ask you to cover it with your mercy because Biafra will come and when it does, we will dance on these streets, I'm telling you. By the time that we are done, humanity will think that we are mad, we are drunk in your glory and rightfully so because your kingdom will come to rest upon this very earth. That very kingdom is the unadulterated, non-negotiable sovereignty of the Republic of Biafra, that your will may be fulfilled in our time. All these we pray, all these we ask for in no other name apart from that name that belongs to you. My name is Namdekanu. I am the leader of indigenous people of Biafra all over this very planet, I tell you. I lead indigenous people of Biafra, Iboi.
Okay, the next on our agenda is the opening prayer, opening prayer. Opening prayer, yes, we've done it. The welcome address by Honorable Utta. Honorable Utta, please, if you have the mic.
Thank you very much. Can you confirm you can hear from me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Your address. The acting Prime Minister of the Biafa Republic Government in exile, Honorable Ogutukun Kure. Our wonderful and spectacular Minister of Information, Honorable Sonat Brawa. Fellow citizens of Biafra, journalists, listeners and esteemed guests. We gather here today again to reaffirm our commitments to the cause of Biafra, restoration and recognition. Recent events have shown us that our struggle is not just about independence, but about the survival of our people, the gelling of our leaders and the designation of Nigeria as a country of particular concern. Our stark reminders of the challenges we face. The repression of Ibo's Biafra in Nigeria is a painful reality that we cannot ignore. However, we see a glimmer of hope. The interest shown by Donald J. Trump, the United States American President and the US Congress on the persecution of Christians in Nigeria had brought out our struggle to the global stage. This is a testament to the power of our collective efforts and the loving prowess of our dear Elias and his team, Moran Global. Permit me to use this opportunity to express gratitude to the acting Prime Minister, Honorable Ogutukun Kure, for his resilience despite the distractions from people that only speak about Biafra because of the financial benefits to them. The more they try to bring him down, the more he showed them results. They accused him of doing photoshopping and he took Biafrans to the Congress House. They said he's carrying back like Jehovah's Witnesses, without knowing that the bag is full of wisdom and knowledge. He became the first Biafran and freedom fighter to ever testify against the zoo in the Congress. What a historic feat that will ever remain in the annals. We must remember that our struggle is not just about court cases or political maneuvers. It is about the resilience of our people, the bravery of our men and the sacrifices of our women and children. It is said that the position of freedom fighters is either in the grave, in the prison or exile. But I stand tall to tell you that in addition to that, being invisible before your enemies and being the midst of their enemies without them seeing you is also can be categorized as a position of a freedom fighter. So all of us here fighting from the homeland are also great freedom fighters. So when you are sitting at home in obedience to the government of Brigi, seeing fighters just hovering around the environment and seeing the truckloads of military hardware in your community, it is a reminder that you are also a great freedom fighter. You are fighting the same way with those in exile, doing your part to ensure that Biafra is restored, the promised kingdom that must be restored. As we move forward, let us remain united and focused on our goal. We will continue to raise our voices. We will continue to advocate for the rights of our people and we will continue to seek for justice in the face of oppression. Let us remember that our actions have consequences and will not be deterred in bringing to book those that are sabotaging our efforts. When you hear the saying in our local parlance that Ibenwa Raze, don't be mistaken. It does not mean Ibo's do not have a king. It entails that in that sense of leader, someone will take up a leadership position and give directions when it mattered most. In that sense of Mazinamdekanu, Simon Eba took the lead, ensuring the legacies of Mazinamdekanu leads on on to the fake people that Mazinamdekanu surrounded itself with. Ignorantly led a campaign against Simon, thinking that doing Mazinamdekanu good. Today, the chicken has come home to roach. They led a shameful act and must be regretting why they did so. We are now the last lap of the race and the APM is handling the battle, battling very well. He has delivered the masterstroke that landed the zoo to coma. The upper court was unprecedented. What a sucker punch he has given to them. I want to use this opportunity to put the word on notice, especially the leader of the Free World, that the terrorists are on the rampage now, kidnapping the hundreds. This time around not for ransom purposes alone, but to get enough human shield should the US decide to embark on airstrike against them. We therefore call on the leader of the Free World, Donald Trump, to consider having boots on the ground of Biafra. Biafra, the fact though its government is ready to provide a base and work with the US soldiers to nip this terrorism in the bud so that peace can return again and for women and children to carry on with their lives without fear of being murdered, being kidnapped or raped by these murderous marudas. My fellow citizens, it is Biafra o'clock. We are getting closer to our final destination. Everything happening today is part of a divine arrangements and nothing can stop Biafra. I say nothing can stop Biafra. We have never been this close. They may try to break your spirit by creating fear, uncertainty and doubts, manipulating emotions to make you feel discouraged enough to give up. You cannot be broken unless you surrender. I call on you to stand courageous and focused. Stand firm, be unmovable as our sacrifices will not be in vain, we will surely emerge victorious. God bless our leaders, Mazinamdekanu. God bless the Prime Minister, Maz, Simon Eba. God bless the acting Prime Minister, Maz, Ogutukun Kure. God bless Bigi. God bless Biafra in general. Thank you.
Erbon, thank you.
Well done, well done, well done, well done Isaac.
Thank you, thank you Maz, you're welcome.
Maz Isaac, thank you so much. The next thing on our agenda is a brief historical background of a central region by my humble self, Onyeze. A brief historical background of the central region of Biafa Republic. On this day, the first ever town hall meeting with our acting Prime Minister, Honorable Ogutukun Kure. This day, the 23rd November 2025. Just as every great builder has a great plan for his great buildings. Our leader Mazinamdekanu, during his broadcasting and preaching, led a very great formidable foundation upon which we are building to be. Nigerian government had thought igniting and convicting him would stop the movement, not knowing that his war has become a solid foundation that was laid on a solid rock. And I want to remind you that breathing is that rock which can never be moved. In one of his finest moments, or should I say one of his finest broadcasts, he preached and he said, "We are going to form a government and the way and manner it seems to be will not be reviewed in peaceful." If not, the sabotage, if not the sabotage will go and block it. And today, the government has been formed. We are very grateful to our, to our Obatobiye, the Prime Minister of the Biafa people. In another development, he also spoke about this Biafra Confederation, where he outlined emphatically the five blocks of the Confederation, namely, the northern region, the southern region, the central region, the eastern region and the western region. Just like every other region, this central region comprises of eight states, namely, Odomegu State, Ikemba State, Owere State, Okibwe State, Alanso State, Yikumisia State and the Bube State, which is the capital territory of the Republic of Biafra. Today, those spooking word of Mazinamdekanu has become a reality as I welcome you all to this first ever Central Regional Meeting of the Republic of Biafra. This has equally accomplished the word of Obatobiye, our Prime Minister Maz, Simon Eba, who said, "We are going to make the kidnapping of our leader Mazinamdekanu to become useless in the hand of the zoo government" because they thought igniting him would stop the movement. Today, we have our forty states with capitals, well structured with responsible and skilled administrators and cabinet members who are doing diligently well in their various states. Biafra is here. I thank you, our acting Prime Minister, for your diplomatic and political engagements in Washington DC and beyond. Mazinamdekanu said, "Go and get me Biafra. I am dead already. It's only Biafra that will resurrect me or bring me to life." If you have not been supporting Brigi and you say you love Mazinamdekanu, start now to support Brigi. This, bring Mazinamdekanu life. This is the only thing that will free bring Mazinamdekan alive. This is the only thing that will free him. That will give him the joy and the fulfillment. Thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you, thank you Onyese, well done, thank you.
Thank you Onyese.
The next thing on our agenda is by Mamac. By Mamac, sorry.
Deu Onyese.
Mamac, are you ready sir?
Yeah, I did not, yeah, I'm here. Eh, 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 tupu maga niroe gao ebawa se odja. I bondi she. Atome iboyabolo. Elulena kamo. Eluna alalena kamo, akamo de kwa ocha. Elulena kamo. Eluna alalena kamo, akanyi de kwa ocha. Asse odja nega no beke. Aye masuje abeke. Ne odje ibo ifangi bia. Ne legono dimji noga ebawa wugifemi ya bia ba e camera. Ne ebemni meya. Aymo totu odje. Aymo akarilu. Aymo afufa makande mu adange. Ya maya ipoku abasi diyelu. Abia bona nyodje. Chukoki kobeoma. Okikeke woken, kenwame. Ike edu gi kala. Abasi diyelu bea bona nyodje. Elu bea bonoje. Ale, bea bona nyodje. Ndi chi no no bea bona nyodje. Ati chi o hafia udu meze bea bona nyodje. Nati oké ande chokon bea bona nyodje. Ogi bupa bereba. Gekuawa, gekuawa. Adi ukun. Uno bea bonoje. Utotu ezema. Bea bona nyodje. Abasi ututu. Ofu ututu. Au nundeji hechiwa abia. Uno mowi hechiwa uno bea bonoje ta. Ebri oku moko. Ebri bea bona nyodje. Nyero fisi isochi. Uno bea bonoje ta. Ogongo angofunporo. Uno bea bona nyodje. Amadi oha bea bonoje. Oge uchi nketiti. Uno bea bonoje ta. Ifi jokendoka uno bea bonoje ta. Oge uchi kadiri. Chiinkazu iboniri. Udu mamin. Oge uchi kenamini bea bonoje ta. Ekandoriya saga. Uno bea bonoje ta. Igusama kikbe jenji. Igusama keku wakoto. Igusama kezi oku. Bea bona nyodje. Gubukuma ya burubé. Ogi bupuma yibeko. Uno bea bonoje ta. Eké bea bonoje. Ode bea bonoje. Afu bea bona nyodje. Mpo uno bea bonoje ta. Asse onye guesoje guesando. Ibinamokba biyasi ya niya lifenwanta yuglendo kuoro go. Aina yo uno bea yuglendo kuano go. Ofu andiofu andiogo. Ebere ugo bere. In case bebe tokohan kujaya. Kujaha ya hopajaya. Hopajiha yife tue ono. Mofutuku ifama ouaya, ouayo ouasa. Biafra yebi. Adigenda inza chopo adewo janotchi adewo. Adigenda chopo anne ali anyanotchi ali any. Anya tu go Yeroba. Anya tu ga osa. Anya tu go nupé. Anya tu go gala. Adigenda in chopo adewo. Anya tu go the TV. Aymo kohan ali any. One abiaru aymo pogo pogo. Ofu jinde wo. Allo obambi so, jinde wo. Otamini oware, jinde wo. Ogetan ku ebekuku, jinde wo. Woe de oware, jinde wo. Mininjaba jinde wo. Anjo nishiani. Our APM, the finisher. Onye ekonye mezoo. Anji neyaba gaka. Anjin doya, neyaba gaka. Anjin doesu nulu ya, neyaba gaka. Anjin domoreme ya, neyaba gaka. Anjin doonoya, neyaba gaka. Mo ono gozo buchanyanya. Onoga mutu buchanyanya. Ono gure buchanyanya. Buchanyu furoi ojo. Buchanyamadojo. Buchanyamongojo. Aye ne gure, oni shachi haani. Uwi gue butuzo. Di to tri po generala. Ne gure Generala Ross. Uno ndes, ndes school of, ndes school, ndes school of score. Bagani ke. Menanjemanyala bulu anyaran. Aymo gure wone ye bonoaka. Aye nasihunu buchinyane wu. Ne gurumu Biafra dumnon, buruburu ebé dumowagu ne ye bonoaka. Nda ke mogaga akon ebia ife abashia imono wanchuka. Madioha. Abasi diyelu, chukoki ke. Gwela akonya yepa wobi. Gweda no no kuwa yepa wobi. Abawfunya legifau memenyaa, ewe egikebuleleki diket. Diketigebuleleka lagamon. Mwen yonwa kobi. Aba bea fado osa wainbaga. Aba bea fado ifa wanchuka. Me prema du dum akaya. Obo go aposa ni ifaji liko no buya wobo. Niya no bo go beke. Me prea nozo. Isay. Isay.
Isay.
Say.
Say.
Say. Say.
Deu.
Say.
Say. Say.
Eh, lega, emura dijede. Ona mure wojie. Ayaya bonoakojia. Anmakbo Onyese, onyo kukota inebu. Abia bonoakonyoje, Onyese bigo bonoakonyoje. Oge wonakoe nebiya, deu. Okay, thank you my information minister for the correction. Thank you, deu. Deu. Onyese. Ebere posage bonoje, ambrojogi, achamiguere. Five thousand AJ. Bonoje, lega akawa nyojie, deu.
Okay, as you, as you are making progress, please, Adam, Angreka, uh, the deputy of, uh, Odomegu, please be the team of those that would record uh, the people that are donating, please record it. Make sure that you record it and find out how they will pay it. If they will pay it in through website, uh, or they will pay it through the homeland and take note that, um, there's some peoples that when they pay it, they will not send evidence of their payment. At the end of everything, the pure S would not, um, be able to, uh, send the money to the national accounts. Please take note of this. Anyone that making any donations or paying, you should provide the evidence of payment to your admins. Thank you.
Do we boot up this epala boy or is save power force?
Kwa gure akenu, akali foko gure akenu. Eh, pekwe muidi ke, pekwe muidi karwa, eh, lekwe otuwa ya fortune. Okay, I did.
Okay, greetings. Once again, I lost my, my co-hostship. I am using five thousand AJ to let this beautiful color not, and there were no.
There were, yes sir. My lord.
Yeah, he handed the color to the, to the, uh, to the head of the family to, to take first before acting.
No, he used five, five.
Though, my, though my lord, the person that bred the color not when the owner of the house wasn't around. He used five thousand AJ to pick the color not.
Akama.
Yes, sir. Akama, makaiga korun, amaki. Akama ramama. Akama rapakaiga koru, onyezanyo. Akama ramama.
Maz, this is a good evening, no? Yeah, it's me, thank you. It's me, thank, thank you so much. My camera is not coming, my camera is not coming on. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, uh, we still, we still need more people to, to come and collect the color. At least, uh, all the states, all the eight states here, you need to represent yourself. Odomegu State, please come up, come on board and answer your name. Odomegu States, we are waiting for you. Okay. Okay, I think, I think let's, let's handle this one, their hands are open.
Okay, um, I want to collect my own, uh, object. So I will use the ten thousand AJ to collect my own object. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable.
Thank you so much. Madamunki, korono niaka now.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yes, so. Otamidi anyimao, bombo. Anarbati, ramao, bombo. Andichi meresin, aman.
Na chukwa poge man. Oh, yo, yo.
This meeting is being recorded.
Thank you, over to you.
Okay.
I'm sorry. What time? Is this ten thousand AJ or five thousand AJ?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand AJ.
Okay. All right, so I welcome everybody to this, um, to this, uh, great, um, uh, yeah, fundraiser. Yeah, this is one, yeah, it's not, it doesn't happen before, so this is the first time all of us are, you know, all the central states. Okay, so APM, if you're here, my greetings. Maz, this Sonia Barawa, Honorable Minister, my greetings. Yeah, Minister Love, my mom.
There were.
My baby. Yeah. All right, Minister Betty, ma beko, then I greet every other person, yeah.
There were. There were. Okay, so I'm all state now, so yeah, please start recording for all of, so I'll start with the two hundred, all right? Yeah. Minister, who is recording for this night?
Is it two hundred AJ or two hundred AJ ma?
Two, sorry, two hundred thousand AJ, yes, two hundred thousand AJ for all states.
Arakoko akeba. Arakoko akeba.
There were.
There were. There were, man, you are man.
Oh, yeah, I wanted to say.
Thank you.
All right, too. Nankiri da anyima. Esbo wa nyedi anyima. Mbo. Ekimere te, amada. Oh, yo, yo. There you, magama.
There were, man. We love him, Madamunki, we love him. The next person on the line is Iwoma, Iwoma, uh, Etanang State Admin.
Etanana.
Iwoma. Etanang State Admin.
I think he's mooted, they cannot moot him.
Sometimes if you call, you know, understand, you twist your mouth to small a bit, you call him.
Maybe, maybe he's having a problem of meeting himself.
Uh, okay, can we go to Ayachuku, Assebu? Ayachuku, can you unmute yourself? Honorable Sonny, check if you can unmute them from there. It's like they're finding it difficult.
Uh, okay, uh, who, who should be unmuted?
Etanana, they muted me. I was mooted.
Okay, Etanana is talking now.
Okay.
Etanana is on. Uh, sorry, I, I was muted from there.
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Okay, good evening everybody. Good evening.
Good evening.
All protocol observed. From Etanana, I will pick the color with the symbol of, uh, five thousand AJ.
Mhm, thank you.
Etanana.
Wow, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Etanana.
Thank you, my very good friend.
Akama ramama, ka koru, talama, nanyo. Akama ramama.
Nikoya, I hope you not got set me today for your, for your miss, so. The choir, I hope you not got set me today for your for your missus, uh.
We will.
I I I'm I'm very, very much awake. I will I will now sing like uh I see yesterday. I I heard him sing it the other day. I pray to, I say, God, I beg you, change this man a voice, if then the only thing will.
Oh my God.
I I you you not hear that, Johnny?
Oh, okay.
Don't worry, come over the.
I I hope he's not here yet.
Don't worry, I'm going to tell on you.
Yes, we go. You could know that, yeah, I just want to quickly do my own before we start work, yeah. It's uh we're about to start, so I won't have all the time as soon as I start working. So I just wanna quickly do my own. First of all, I still want to appreciate everyone who keep this uh this Biafra going. It's not easy. Every day we come, that is what is called mental toughness. We must continue. We are the only people the zoo is afraid of. It's not those our brothers, those cowards that are all there gossiping out and down. We must maintain the the fire burning. Appreciate everyone, our APM, I appreciate you, Sonia Barawa, our senior citizens, including me, because I'm a senior citizen. I appreciate.
Welcome on board.
Thank you, thank you, our bishop, thank you. So, yeah, without wasting time, on behalf of all the Mergu states, my my dear state, all the Mergu states. It's just that I don't know how all the Mergu states is in central. It's supposed to be in the east, because we are from the man from the east, you know? But anyhow, we appreciate it. It doesn't matter. All we want is Biafra. On behalf of all the Mergu states, I'm 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 collecting the color note with the hundred thousand AJ. Thank you, everyone. All the money we paid this week. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. You've been doing good. You've been doing well. And the next, and we collecting for him. The choir over to you.
Thank you, and your lead.
Thank you, thank you so much, Ayachuku.
Ayah, welcome, man.
The next on our line is Angoleka.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Good evening, our APM. Evening. More information is back. Good evening, brethren. In fact, God do it already for all.
Man.
So, this mean, you know, this is the first time of central region where God will still do it for us. It is not easy, but I pray that Chukuku pick up Biaman. We open doors for all of us so that we will not lack in supporting of what we are doing. No matter what women are trying to do, but all my hope is that God is still with us. Without God, we are moving nowhere. And the the will of God is already working on our side. Despite the obstacles, despite intimidation, despite the experiences that we are seeing. It never deter us from marching forward. So I have a little song that I'm trying. In no place, I be about the letter. I said that by the river of the zoo. And here we are. And there we went when we remember Biafra. By the river of the zoo.
The way captivity. Sing a love song.
Hi, your network uh.
Network no green, network.
Why shift your position to see to get better? Oh, it has not that up.
So, the network has knocked our Angoleka out with this beautiful victory song. Okay, let's let's have a journey and while we wait for Angoleka to come back. Okay, Angoleka is back.
I'm back, you don't mind this uh network. Thank God. So, what I'm trying to say, we are, we have moved the mountain. We have reached our goal. It's just a little time which we are seeing it. So, behalf of all the people, we are.
Oh my God.
Mazze, Chukuka Diga, fifty thousand.
Hey, surely Mazze can't do that, we had.
Let me assist my lady.
Okay, did you get the total?
Yeah, let me, let me assist my lady. I'm the admin of all the Mergu states.
Okay.
Mazze Chukua Emeka, fifty thousand AJ. Wow, am I not coming out?
Yeah.
Your network was bad.
It was breaking, it was breaking before. Okay, if you can.
I should suck up fresh.
Yeah, you can, yeah, we didn't hear you well.
Okay, I said that all the Mergu states are picking color. I welcoming our APM with red and white. Of course, in Mazze, Chukuka Diga, fifty thousand AJ. Mazze, Sipren, ten thousand AJ. Mazze, Oniade Manavu, which is dove, three thousand AJ. Mother Angoleka, ten thousand AJ. Mazze Chukua Emeka, fifty thousand AJ. Mazze Kelvin, sixty thousand AJ. Mazze Kechukwu, ten thousand AJ. All together is two hundred and thirteen thousand AJ from all the Mergu states. They won.
They all, they all in them.
Under the Mergu.
American, the the choir in your bed, wake up.
Give us time. You give us time.
Uh hi, I'll go, okay. We try to come go, if you, okay.
Ah, thank you, thank you. I beg you, this is why you call my name, not indirectly reporting me to the police. I I beg you, I my my apology.
Jenny, yellow card, yellow card.
There is no card though. Any other interruption, we get a ticket. Love him, dad.
As spirit already, please, come on board.
There will be shop comfort. Good evening, man.
Okay, thank you so much, uh the central region. Speaking to you here is a state admin. I want to thank everyone. I want to appreciate our APM. For his good work that he's doing. Want also to thank our needs of information for kindness and love toward what we are doing. Yes, um we are making progress and we are looking forward to see the activities of all the state admins. Supervised by the regional heads and to make sure that the message is grassroots. And the pride of our heritage is to make sure that the message reached to the grassroots. For our every single member of here. And if you're in your state platform, I'll talk to one uh two hundred peoples, three hundred peoples. To ask your admins why there's no their citizen in that platform. So we want all the state admins and all the citizens of each state to make sure that um if anyone did not have telegram, create telegram to them. Wants every state platform to make sure that the state platform is functioning. And every state that is not upgrading their platform by adding their citizens, that state admin be questioned. So, uh we are making a progress. I must tell you the reality. And um we are looking forward to have uh Souths. South will have their own town hall meeting. It may be before, after this, there will be the form. And um encourage everyone to be doing the needful and support a little you can to make sure this uh we end this journey. We are tired of every day we gather here like this and say that we are doing town hall meeting. Want to, we don't want to see ourselves as agitation, as career agitation. Want to see ourselves as people that fight and overcome the demons and be a nation. I believe on the process that we have got, very soon, we are going to celebrate together. So, on behalf of my executive, my bits, we are picking the color notes in the sum of ten thousand AJ. And for those that we have appointed to records all these donations, make sure that you record everything. And then give account of it, how and how they donated. So, all the committee should take note of this. Thank you and God bless all of us.
Thank you so much.
We can do very well.
We know your doing, we know your doing. Thank you so much.
Yes.
The choir.
There were.
There were.
Thank you very much.
There was spirits.
Jenny, are you ready, Jenny? Jenny, can you can you unmute and talk to Biafrans? Okay, while we are still waiting for you, maybe former.
Jenny, you can unmute now.
Are you are you hearing me now, please?
Yeah, yes.
Good evening, Biafrans. On behalf of the Com State, I'm picking the garden egg with ninety seven thousand AJ. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I will send a receipt to Sonia Barawa.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Got a blinish, yeah, pause.
Yeah, ma, thank you. Jenny, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, Jenny, Jenny, that's what I called it. Thank you so much, Jenny.
Maybe former, talk to Biafrans.
Maybe if a man unmute yourself.
Can I unmute? I will can I mute, okay?
Yeah, uh good evening, everyone. I want to thank my uh APM. APM, I really, really appreciate uh your effort to see that Biafra rejoice uh very soon. I want to thank um the Prime Minister for information, Mazze Abarawa. Uh greeting to uh my brother, the COS. Uh thank you so much, my lovely brother. I want to thank one of my sister there, I've seen you work, uh sister Nkeroka. I thank you so much. I'm seeing all you. Thank you much. Uh oh. On behalf of my estate, I thank you all, I will be blessed.
Which state is your state?
Alanso State.
Alanso, okay. Make sure the name is a great name.
That's maybe former admin, Alanso State. Do you get me?
Did you mention amount?
We didn't mention, we didn't hear the amount.
Okay, it might be a network, ten thousand AJ.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, my dear former.
Ten thousand, ten thousand, thank you.
Alanso, and we appreciate.
Thank you, there Alanso.
Thank you so much. You're doing greatly well in your states. Nonia, let's have you.
Okay, I'm nonia, I'm mute.
Thank you, sir. That's good, that's good to know. Um uh please, all protocols observed, I'm on the road. Uh I just wanted uh uh to support what we are doing today with one hundred AJ. Uh, I just wanted, uh, uh, to support what we are doing today with one hundred AJ man behalf of, uh, Kiwi State. There were.
Wow.
Welcome. Oh, one hundred AJ man.
Yes, man, yes. So I will send the receipt to, who do I send the receipt to?
Information Minister.
Okay, thank you, sir, thank you. This year, you can.
Thank you, I love you, thank you.
Honorable, there were.
There were, yeah, man.
There were no.
There were, there are no.
Eh, and, 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 I'm a.
There were.
Everybody, ladies and gentlemen, didn't, didn't, not be conny. This year, Nick.
There were.
There were.
There were.
Oh. Ah, come, my, 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 I got, Koro, no, yeah, ban you. Ah, come, my, my, my.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Nonia, my man, man. France want to hear from you, thank you.
Let's continue. Mazi, you need to care the name.
Uh, uh, um, encode the number, you can unmute yourself.
Hello, okay, I can, I can, um, greetings.
No, Mars, eh?
Greetings, sir. Uh, my senior comrades, my ladies, ministers and, um, our honorable minister for information. And our APM, I greet you all, thank you so much for a good job. Uh, before I go on, I want to move a motion with the twenty, ten thousand AJ. I want to move a motion before I go on. I want to say that henceforth, nobody should address our IG as a lover. Lover is not a Bia France language.
Oh.
Yes, as a lover. If you don't know what to call her, a lover, I don't want to hear a lover with the ten thousand AJ. And I am saying that she'll be called IG. Or if you know ID on that name, that is a Bia France name, whether it's from, um, Ibibo or is it called it. But a lover is not a Bia France name. Henceforth, I am moving emotion that it should be seized from now.
Uh, we can be called a whole ton, bro.
We agree.
We can be called a whole ton, bro.
Whatever you like, call him, but let him be a Bia France name, a Bia France language.
It's a Bia France, yeah, December, uh, December, uh, December.
Yes, let it, let it be a Bia France language. Lover is a Arab language, it's not a Bia France language. Uh huh, so.
I want to, on behalf of all the major states. I want to take the cola with thirty thousand AJ.
I love.
That can not.
Too much, we, too much.
Yes, sir. Ah, come, my, 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 I got, the number.
Ah, come.
My, dear.
There were.
Who called the number? Who the number? Who called the number? You just got a ticket.
IG.
You just got a ticket. Who called the number? Never remember, ni, oh, Lu, eh, no, 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 no. No, no. Hey.
Ten thousand AJ.
I just got a ticket.
Ten thousand AJ. Ten thousand AJ.
I, 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 I.
No, that voice, that voice, no, that voice, that voice. Ever kind of a canga, ever kind of a canga, give a Bia France, who's a mokanga? Ever come to have a mokanga?
That's a voice.
That voice. Ten thousand.
That's a voice. That, that's a voice.
Ah, so, what's the number? Uh, just for record purposes, so far, how much is it?
Fifty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
There were, there were.
Now, remember when you are done to put down your hand or you pick a ticket.
Uh, no, I, 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 I'm aware, nah, I can be, I'm, I'm.
How come my, how come my, my, my?
I'm just a little busy. Oh, bravo.
No problem, man.
Thank you so much, who called the number?
Hello.
Nonua, Monuba, over to you, please.
Amuta. So.
Some mission.
Yeah, am I coming out?
I'm all bad, yeah.
Okay, yeah, good evening, my APM. Uh, good evening, my ministers in the house, I greet everyone.
Now.
Yeah, the people are welcome to Central Region of Afeland. Uh, without wasting time, I'm picking the color with the ten thousand AJ. There were.
There were.
The Mamba. Mamba.
The Mamba.
Your free smart TV.
I'm a child, though.
Screen now, choose yours and get it delivered for free, no fees and no shipping cost.
Really?
Receive your free smart TV today. Tap the screen now, choose yours and get it delivered.
Monuba, move your stuff, please.
Well, if, if, he can deliver the money anyway.
And put down your hand. Monuba, man.
But wait to act again, me. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Help me, yes, sir.
Thank you so much, let's go to Azieh Ada Abigail. One, your mama, my, my, I'm over to you, please.
Where had Abigail?
Is that, is that Abigail?
Problem on meeting.
Yes, I've been, right now.
Okay.
Am I being heard?
Yeah, loud and clear.
Loud.
Bia France queen. Yes, see. Uh, do you? Me, I won't, I won't, I'm gonna move, he catch me, yeah, she, I'm the young queen. You. I'm the co, I'm the co, no.
Yeah.
Ekelela, man, no. Hmm?
Yeah, bro.
I'm, I'm, but, oh, none to move, where? Eh, hmm, it is, boy, eh.
All them, man.
She can. Yeah. When you know I'm high mega. Oh, you know, no, no, I go to Gaga now she. Oh, he break me mega. Me perro uso. Meno, when you need to wait, you know, no, I hear. And me got it now, I love. I would don't do. I for all. Zulodikufula, any terrorist Republic on him, he did that way. Actually, I I get this chicken, they will leave la. And be a man, I kill. Padear can look, ne be bunny. But she didn't care. Yeah, you owe boy, he kick rain on my me. He. He bunny, yeah, more jej je. Washington DC, who need to know I hope I hope. Now, I hope I hope. Again, there's a number, I know we can't get any. Check, check, I'm a shocker, oh, honey, I woke, she had drew her, who are you? More, I can't talk to you, so. Ebe. The cubo, I told you. In in a in a cocker so President Donald Trump, Eba, I told you. So, in here, he made that. We have give me, I give you, I am, I'm a man, I'm a guy, you can be banned, so, you know. Yara, ma. Eh. A charm show, get Yahoo. Again, he will la, again, so for any rule. Be cool, no, me, what a poor, eh, rep, on the new, eh, no, Benadara, not a coney, you know, nearly. It's a shot. Oh, you end do, my, zoom, and they call a whole, whole, biyafr. I'm back, I'm here, Jim, eh, about a little, I got. Ah, he, biyafr, I have, but I, he, he la. Oh, baby, be cool. My, zoom, and they call, oh, no, we can't talk about, oh, no, we can't. I talk about, no, no, we go, you know, you know. Oh, when I, I, you know, me, got that, number, you know, I, I, but. My, you know, no, who I am, oh, who. Any action, any, oh, I'm good. When you are, can look. Eh. Eba, I had home, I, yeah, you can catch me, catch my, go, you know, you know, when, oh, be, in case you be, when, oh, be. Oh, when, oh, be, never, you, oh, you, you, be cool. Oh, damn, for, I, I, you can catch me, can you hear? Eba, I'm a man now. Oh, you, you know, me, me, yeah, yeah, it's a, I, he, me, go, la. But then, when I, I, you know, me, me, yeah, oh, so, you know, can, oh, so, can, do now, who, who. Okay, oh, she, they, I, me, perro, la, no, so. Do you know, ego, she, I know, more, eh, how. Be cool, eh, kill, eh, la, me, no. Um. On a, eh, boo, oh, yes, eh, kill, eh, la, and give a lot, buy, eh, la, ni, ni. And on a, no, money, no, but she, get, I, so, oh, I, 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 you, quadruple, I, quadruple, eh. I quadruple, eh. Oh, oh, yes, eh, July five thousand, now, I, oh, just. Actually, me. Oh, I, oh, yes, eh, five thousand, I, oh, I, went, oh, haha. Come on, come on, they, Texas, eh, when the, we're in, on a Texas, she, I, he, I hope, I, I. Um, I actually. I got, I do. Oh, where is state? Now, I hear me get that. And, eh, with, eh, central region. Hmm. I wonder, should he? Oh, where the, when the, Baraban, and they should he? Oh, he, me, let me, in the zoo, do, where, oh, Konyo, she, oh, oh, who's, oh, the, ma, the man, ah, Tom, Paul, Jim, ah, ni. Anya, 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 do, when I, she, anya, I, he, so, she, who, I, like, eh, anya, give, when you. Oh, where the, when you, where the, you know, God, because, she, ah, no, eh, eh.
Well, I do, I should talk.
Oh, well, okay. Yeah.
Yeah, wow. Uh huh. So, that, eh, eh. Why, eh, can me, the fifty, eh, J, my, I do. Eh, come up, oh, oh, you, oh, no. Um, as you add, eh, matter. You put fifty, eh, J, ma. As you add, eh, on New York, one, nine, you want, as you add, I, bridge, the hundred, eh, J, ma. Yeah, two hundred, eh, J, make, um, hmm. So, on, I, you, okay, who, on a, Rebecca, she, me, I, Japan, fifty thousand, eh, J. Fifty thousand, eh, J. You make, oh, to, in here, she, oh, she, eh, me, my, huh. When, I, I, you know, you, okay. Eh, no, when you, eh, 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 be a fra. Oh, you, Patati, eh, J, ma. You make, oh, to, in here.
Umunemunde wono.
Nde wono, nde wono Mazi, nde wono, you are welcome.
I is your opportunity eh kenunu ni kama, naolo mani nekunu naalo. I see, esimwe Ikemba monu omunem, we na asaportunu with twenty thousand to five thousand eje. So, you see ni ke, na, ndi bo she na.
Nnero, na wa ni gatswe.
Hello.
Yeah, go ahead.
Na ganero, na ganero Mazi.
Nnero, nnero can go ahead, wa ni.
Ndi, ndi bo she na, onye kwa ke benke tangu mili, no gakokozo. So na ndizu, ndizu akogwa ke benke tangu mili, va gakoya lo kya. So.
Can I meet yourself?
Yes, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nnero, you can meet yourself now, wa Jesus boy, get yourself ready.
Mki. Mki o.
America Network.
Oh, nnero, nnero.
One night, the red diamond. Five thousand. One night, the red diamond. Awu nnero.
Awu nnero, oh Jesus boy.
Jesus boy.
Oh, Jesus boy. Must be Jesus.
One night, Jesus be there, yemma. One night, your boy there, yemma. Onye chi merese, na madha pohe na ya. Oh yo yo yo. I call ya, I call the.
Nde wono. Waliya, waliya. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, na, nnero ka, was it on here?
Yeah.
Okay, 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 thank you so much, um, I'm back, I'm back, Jesus boy, nde wono, thank you so much for coming out to represent, um, Ikemba State. Um, on behalf of Mazi Emeni Ke from Ikemba State, on Apado Ikemba State with fifty thousand eje.
Wow.
We can not.
Huzzah.
Hmm.
Huzzah.
Indi ke, indi ke mbada ke, iwe wela ho.
Adaba kokoiha, ma rebeniolo na.
Yeah.
You know, we can not, we can not do.
Because I love this, I love this, a healthy competition, that's what we want.
That's what we want.
Okay, like.
Yeah, I think. Somebody needs to need.
Where am I going?
So Ikemba admin is having network problem, uh, he's supposed to be here now, but, uh, I'll still waiting for him to come and announce their own, uh, supports, but I believe they will come in a heavy way, please, we're still waiting for Ikemba admin. Even all no admin, okay, can I go alone, nnero?
Okay, my I go alone, Emeni Ke.
Emeni Ke or nnero?
But, nnero, nnero, on behalf of.
Me la enke, um, nnero, nnele, on behalf of Emeni Ke.
Alright.
Fifty thousand.
Alright.
Mhm. Akamarama kaedakuru, emeni kubanyo. Ah. Nde wono. Nnero, nnero, na bube kwa wo, ote, wa hazi cheta, nnero.
Um, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, muna. Yeah, muna my, um, muna my admin kuchalu now, so I'll save for, for now, um, twenty thousand eje from Ikemba State, ozokwa. Thank you.
Okay. Ndi ke mbada, we should ke.
Twenty thousand, nde wono.
Minister love, we can go, 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 na, go, na, go, na, please.
Oh, I get baka, I baka, oh my dear, because say the yes, it can.
Eh, 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 eh.
The last thing, the last thing from Allah, uh, what was it from, the last thing from Allah?
A hundred days.
From Allah were the hundred eje ma.
From next year?
Yes, that was the last contribution under Allah.
Okay, okay, I wait after you let me know.
Yeah, atobom, my dear.
Happy end.
And, 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 and let again, no, I, I know, kya.
My people, I love the healthy competition, that's what we want.
Betty and Tibi.
Adabetti.
Adabiafra, can you make?
Desane, desane, wedding.
Oh, Divani, thank you, my people.
Adab.
We are here for each other, oh.
Yes, so.
My people, if Emelu the other day, I thank God, now our people are put ago out of their shell. There is no other way we can support our onyendu and, uh, our PM, Mazi Simon Eba, and our current leader, our APM, than what we are doing now, no matter how little. So, I'm very, very happy that our people are gradually coming out, this is the only way forward. Coming together and doing what we are doing, I thank you people so much. My rep, I have sent my, uh, donation to your WhatsApp.
Okay.
So I'm supporting this, uh, Central Region's, uh, Town Hall meeting with twenty thousand eje. That alone so much, and may God continue to guide their friends and protect our APM, oh. He is the man, um, in the Okwatu, Okwatu Rundi Nigeria. Shameless Nigerians, they even came to that hearing and was begging America for help, they are too shameless.
Because they know their shame now.
They know their shame, honestly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adabetti. Eh, thank you, mki.
Adabiafra, God bless me.
Hello.
Adabetti ne da nyima. Adabetti ne marama. Onye chi merese, na madha pohe na ya. Oh yo yo yo.
Nde wono. Nde wono.
Nde wono, thank you, Wada, nde wono. Solomon, oh mama, me here, let's have you. Uh, Solomon, okay, you can unmute yourself from there.
Nde wono.
Mmm.
Thank sorry, John, oh mama no.
Mmm, nde wono.
Uh, uh, thank you more, hello, we have a tapalna, you see, I, I, well, I appreciate. Anya onana eva, I'm very happy, na regiona, I na ga, I ganero, asking for, uh, Ikemba State. Uh, muna na asaportiha, na man, with, uh, five thousand eje. Uh, well, I think today, um, I got the same, uh, uh, I'm a bono, I'm a, I am a go marry.
Yes.
I think I will. Think I will be in the company, they are right here, so I know two words about it, I know controversy, convert now, no matter what is happening. I, I have a bad idea, so, anya ona, you see, uh, na, na, I can, I, I want to, I sense, I did what I pass.
Hmm.
I greet you sir. So, na, so mondem. Oyabona ada kwalamba, you know, regardless of. You know, they want, they want our spirits to. I got it. But they can't survive, they can't succeed in this one, okay? Now we there here some kangaroo. Kai gaba ni ru, ala lazo, mubi afra. Kai, ala kwa lazo. Kai gaba ni ra nyala lazo. Unumakuan, nigani ru bundu. Umobi afra, ai gaba ni ru, ka gaba ni ru, ka gaba ni ru. Ala lazo. Ai gaba ni ra nyala lazo eh. Igani ru bundu, hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Na, na, na.
Yeah.
Eh, eh, mudi ri, moa the states, Adam, Adam stateless. I will make a call biyafra. And state you do my states eh, so I belong to all states.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Asemo, kamjiri, thirty thousand ajemwe kwa do, noko monena, umonna. Nko bo chikta. We nasikoma ra ido momma, na cha koke kabiama.
Yes.
Eh, oh gee.
Alright, one love oh. Nde one oh. Mommy comfort, you're not shiny. Dalu. Thank you baby. Dalu.
Yes, sir. Hmm, akantawa.
Onorebo, beti, nde wokoa, ekele mono, ricono. Nde wo chi. De kwa yibem, mudi sinike oh.
Great thank you. I don't know whether monida no no.
Eh, wo, I just heard your voice now.
No, oh mommy comfort, I did say that.
Then I answered.
Eh, eh, anu romia, no.
Dalu no oh.
Oh.
Dalu.
Okike bu no me oh. Say. Baga, baga. Eh, nem, dalu.
Well. Tawao, eh wo, akantawa oh. Eh wo, akantawa oh, nyakwa ki game well. Chi, this song is for you. Hallelujah. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Dalu.
Nenaya, nenaya, can we have you? Okay, sorry, let's have Okutebe TV first.
Oh, alright.
So, Okute, eh, unmute yourself. Okute, unmute yourself.
Hmm, let's see if he's muted. Okay, Okute can unmute yourself now. Okay, you may not be. Alright, okay, so the network has dropped him. Let's go to nenaya. Alright, nenaya can unmute now.
Okay. Nde one, nde biyafra, nde one omonem no monnam, in the central region. Nde one, nde one, di sinike, onya wa ebwa, onya one no me.
My voice coming out.
Eh, eh, hold on, you will speak later, right, somebody have taken eh, your place, so after eh, Wada Nenaya speak.
Okay. Okay, this evening I'm supporting Central Region with thirty ajemma. I will post the receipt to Mazi Abarawa. Nde one oh, di sinike.
Thank you, Wada, thank you very much.
Nde one, very much. Akamarama kaiga kuro nenavanyo. Ah, akamarama.
Nenaya, God bless you.
Wada Nenaya, thank you so much, remain blessed, Okute can we have you now, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening.
Na.
Our His Excellency. Honorepo ogu chukunkere. I like a lega, ak- akaindele, thank you for your good work. Oh, the his last life, elonya kede. Oh, bobo zotiyambros.
Hmm hmm.
Eh, kene, kana di kela komre me, oh, we ke me kozo.
Kozo.
I said, well, you know, you guys should be excited. So I asked him, so do you know what it means for them to release M N K? He goes, no, he goes, yeah, we'd be happy when they release us. I say, you sure? So yeah, I said, do you know what it means when they release M N K? They said they're gonna release him now? And I said, that means he gave up on Biafra. He goes, oh, God forbid. I said, there you go. I said, because he is there fighting, he is there struggling, you know, for us taking all the, you know, the, the arrows, you know, all the, the, you know, the wiles of the, of the devil. I say, nobody should be sad, you know, we should just do what is right. So I gave them the, the site, you know, the, the, uh, the, uh, uh, Brady site on, on the internet. And so I told him, I say, share this, you know, and, and you guys go there and contribute. I said, by the way, there's a meeting going on today, but they are having issues coming on, you know, joining the meeting. I think they had issues joining yesterday too. So I don't know, uh, what can be done about that. Uh, I don't know if the Nigerian state is blocking them from joining. I don't know. Uh, but anyway, this, today I like to pick up the collar with a hundred A J M. And, uh, so, uh, Mazio, okay, did you get my, uh, my, uh, my text? Honorable, okay?
Uh, yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I, I did, yeah, uh, thank you very much. Uh, it's having reported anywhere, uh, by, uh, uh, alluded.
Okay, great, great. So, uh, uh, Central, who do you see here? Who do you see here? Uh, by God's grace, we will, we will move faster than we thought.
Thank you so much. You are a consistent father. Thank you so much. God bless you.
And there were, there were.
We love you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, sorry, uh, shut up that, uh, please, uh, we have, uh, from, uh, Wada Nelly and family.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, hi, dude. Okay, uh, sorry, are you still speaking?
No, I was gonna take out my, my hand and someone did, so I said, thank you.
Oh, 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 okay. And so, uh, from, uh, uh, Wanda Nelly and the family, uh, they are uh, picking, uh, uh, another, a fufa cola, uh, for the man, uh, whatever that is available with a ten A J M, uh, ten point three A J M. Uh, receipt is already with me. I'll forward it to the, uh, receipts platform. Thank you.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, uh, so, sorry, uh, she just raised her hand up. Maybe she want to, uh, uh, say something. Okay, Wada, unmute yourself.
Okay.
I didn't know you've joined already.
I was there. Good evening, Ojenubia France. We are winning the battle. Yeah, I, I wouldn't have said anything because he has said it, but I just want to also register my physical presence in this, uh, great meeting. It's okay that last time, I basically follow, uh, eastern, eastern region. But due to the, it was, uh, we didn't really know. So when we consulted him, we said, okay, let's vote today. But not to forget, I want to appreciate everyone who is standing with Mazinamdekanu, because Nigeria has made a great mistake in their life. They don't know that this is, I told them that this is when the case had just started. You know, taking Mazinamdekanu to Sokoto, um, the Nas President Attiku came after hitting Biafran, hitting Ibo, hitting Mazinamdekanu, staying with Mazinamdekanu for three months. His mentality, his mental reasoning changed.
Yes.
So in this case, taking Mazinamdekanu to Sokoto, he is going to continue the gospel in that Boko Haram camp. And a lot of them are going to reshape their mind and their reasoning. That hatred of Biafra, they will change it and also propagate this gospel, just as the Fulani man Attiku, the Nas President is doing. So they don't know that they have also pushed Mazinamdekanu to the north to continue this, uh, gospel. So we should not panic. I just want to thank all Biafrans, how we comforted ourselves, because they wanted to see how we react, so that Boko Haram, non military, bring down to southeast, in the name that the southeast is boiling because of that, then we see the opportunity to finish what they have been planning. But God held the peace and maintained peace in southeast. So it is a team of joy. So I want to appreciate our min- our Minister of Information. I want to appreciate Mazo Geshukunkiri. I told them that that bag you are carrying, as my daughter read the poem here. So that bag, that bag of wisdom will do more greater work. We are winning the battle. We have won the battle. Mazinamdekanu is coming out with Biafra.
Yes.
Coming out with Biafra. May God bless everyone. You are wasting your time. He is fighting gallantly, neighbor. And still deceiving Mazisai Monet, you should desist from me. Because you are making his case worse. If not for God's grace, if Gunta didn't have joined this thing, they would have sent Mazisai Monet to Nigeria, and the all of you people there are contributing to it, because you are dragging him out. But God Almighty is with us. They won. Okay, Jack, Jack, you can go ahead. Yes, you are.
Okay, um, good evening, my A P M. Hello, Biafrans, I greet everybody here. Um, let me start an existing protocol. I just want to support, um, the that travel, that fast and fast region, it's the sum of twenty A J M. Thank you very much.
So much, Jack. All you do is very consistent. I can go ahead. It's a twenty, twenty A J M. From Jack. Go ahead. Ready?
Uh, you struggling to unmute? Okay, unmute yourself now. I'm called the number. You have a network issue?
Yeah, may, maybe, because he's unmuted, yeah.
There were.
How is it going? How is it going?
Well, very well.
Very smooth.
Thank you, Central Region. Thank you, thank you. Where are we on the program now?
Still on cola, almost, uh, almost, uh, done, almost through, yes, with the cola breaking anyway.
Okay, let me play jingle while we continue to wake the house up.
Anywhere in Biafra land, we confront Fulani terrorists, we shall meet them head on. We know that they are part of the police and the army. Danjuma himself, General T Y Danjuma himself testified before the British Parliament that the army of Nigeria and the police are colluding in the conquest of indigenous populations in Nigeria. And we are no exception to that very horrible and sinister conspiracy. The police we have in our land are terrorists in uniform. The army we have in Biafra land are basically terrorists. They are there to aid and to support Fulani Jangja with advancement to the Atlantic Ocean. And we are there to stop them, and we are stopping them, and we'll continue to stop them. A few days ago, as I said, we embedded our men and women of the Northern Command of Eastern Security Network. When we said Northern Command, people were confused. Biafra land is a nation. We have northern Biafra. We have central, we have the south, which is the coastal region, we have the east, and we have the west. When I talk about the Northern Command, I'm talking about the northern part of Biafra land, which incidentally starts from Benue State. So we are right to be there. If you don't want us to be in Benue State, quietly go back to Abuja and appeal to them. Tell them to release Ibo people in Benue and carve them back into a Boein state where they should belong, or any good state, as the case may be. Therefore, anybody, you know one thing about Nigeria is anywhere in Biafra land, we confront Fulani terrorists, we shall meet them head on. We know that they are part of the police and the army. Danjuma himself, General T Y Danjuma himself testified before the British Parliament that the army of Nigeria and the police are colluding in the conquest of indigenous populations in Nigeria. And we are no exception to that very horrible and sinister conspiracy. The police we have in our land are terrorists in uniform. The army we have in Biafra land are basically terrorists. They are there to aid and to support Fulani Jangja with advancement to the Atlantic Ocean. And we are there to stop them, and we are stopping them, and we'll continue to stop them. A few days ago, as I said, we embedded our men and women of the Northern Command of Eastern Security Network. When we said Northern Command, people were confused. Biafra land is a nation. We have northern Biafra. We have central, we have the south, which is the coastal region, we have the east, and we have the west. When I talk about the Northern Command, I'm talking about the northern part of Biafra land, which incidentally starts from Benue State. So we are right to be there. If you don't want us to be in Benue State, quietly go back to Abuja and appeal to them. Tell them to release Ibo people in Benue and carve them back into a Boein state where they should belong, or any good state, as the case may be. Therefore, anybody, you know one thing about Nigeria is
Thank you so much, Honorable Sani Abarawa. Wonderful man. Um, I'm called the number, can we have you now? Is your network stable? I put the number, can you unmute yourself? Okay, if you cannot, let's have, uh,
You have not sent me, you have not sent me to mute. I was waiting for you to send me the, I just saw it now. Thank you so much. Maybe the something is delaying to the, uh, to come to the side, my side, I don't know. Because I was waiting for you to send me. Thank you so much for having me. Thank you so much, everyone, my ladies and comrades, ministers. I greet you, um. There's something, uh, I don't know, yes, because we need to, no smoke, uh, anything we, our leader is, uh, despite everything, is when I hear that somebody touch our, touch our leader, I used to boil. And I was, said that a prison water in Sokoto, uh, hit our leader because he refused to wear contaminated prison clothes. He said no to eat, and he has to beat our leader up. So I don't know if that, that news is authentic. I don't know.
It's flying on the media, because, uh, very soon you will also hear that, uh, they are poisoning our leader. It is part of, it is part of the message that they have to bring out side here, so that all of us will be in panic and then we will not be able to focus.
Uh, 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 not, uh, it's true, it's real, right? For those, the way.
They all know that, um, they have put themselves in one chance. So if anything happens to Onyendu, it is not even Biafran that asks, that will ask them, it is, uh, American government that will ask them. Because, uh, America already have the case file on their table, even before they started this, uh, shambolic nonsense. So please, um, even, uh, even, uh, Maxwell Opera, the attorney or the barrister that visited Onyendu today. Thing is, he has been dead for two days now, and today he left a message. I just posted the video out. He said, Onyendu said, you all should ignore every messages that they will be putting out in the media. You hear, I hear, say, I hear, say, this happened, this happened, this happened, because it's a way of destroying your resolve. Yes, you need to do that, so that they weaken your spirit. So please, ignore, uh, every news that is flying there. We communicate with the legal team of, uh, Mazinamdekanu. So if there is anything, we will communicate to Biafrans the right way. Thank you so much.
Okay, sir, um, you say this, please, my people, uh, because, um, there's, uh, some inferno, uh, I think inferno that, uh, um, bang up in Okusigo, and that is economy jihad. I want to tell our people something, because our people are not paying attention. Um, and, uh, everything, you don't expect everybody to do anything, everything to be done to you, you yourself. You have to do something yourself, know that you're in a state of war, and cut some things and minimize some certain things in order to save yourself. I said this one thing last time, when you are in every village, every village at all, you see that the Fulanis, in fact, I don't know why the Fulanis supposed to be my village now. I don't know why. That the Fulanis will be there by now. But if I told that today, some of them are seeing your village, and you see them, uh, so they see them packing, they are moving out with their belongings. Don't take it for granted, something is about to happen. Either attack, just use in that area, which you, where is, of that kind of thing, then you have to put yourself in order. It's good when you are aware that something is coming, and you, you saw there's something coming, that the thing take, but it doesn't take you on our way. Even, even the, even the person coming with the highest weapon, and the first one, he saw it coming. There's something you can do, than that you take, you are taking on away. This is not the time of you sleeping, every day, daytime, delivering yourself, just take some siesta. At night, when women and children are sleeping, then twelve o'clock, you have to be awake till six o'clock. So all something is happening, and the guest dog, put dogs in your compound, it can save you or something. And again, still carrying baskets, as if they are selling, uh, something for women here. I said this a lot, and let me repeat it again. Sometimes, you know, you, you overlook them, because they act like, uh, somebody who would die today, those children, don't organize them. Some of that thing they are carrying. Sometimes, when they are carrying, then you try to see, maybe women have to do this. They try to bring it down, they refuse, force them to bring it down. Sometimes, the content are one plastic, you used to put fuel. They are the people who use go and, and soak that fuel, then other, throw the fire. And again, some of those things used to contain, it lose AK four seven, lose AK four seven. Don't take it for granted. Whenever you want to bring it down, they refuse. Call other women, force them to bring it down. Okay, force them to bring it down. When you see them entering with the children, don't overlook them. That children, you see, that those child, that are ten years, eight years, they can dissemble AK four seven and assemble it back. Those women can operate it. Don't be alert now, because be there will not be everywhere. It is you that we watch very well, when it's something that is suspicious, then you know how to communicate. Okay, this is not the time you begin to move around, do any harm, misbehave. You have to know that you are in state of war and focus. And I'm pleading with the government that this five Friday, that to, uh, that to be implemented with the, with immediate effect. So this moron that playing on our road, we need to get rid of those, those morons on our road. They need, are your hand. Thank you so much. Good number.
So much.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here. I'm called number, thank you so much. I think the next person on our, this one is, uh, we owe a homeland. C O A homeland. Can you unmute?
All right, uh, special greetings, as always, to all my honoreables. I just have a, a very simple thing to say. And it is those who have true direction, clear direction does not stumble on the way. Today, we have the clearest direction of our freedom. And there is no reason justifiable anywhere in heaven and on earth for us to stumble. So we are marching with increasing flaming speed to worse our destination, which is freedom. That is that. I apologize for coming late. Um, I came late for today's meeting. Uh, there's a reason for that. And, um, right now, I have been searching for the cola plate so that I can pick one with five thousand A J, but I can't, uh, find it. Someone should show me the cola note plate, so that I can pick one with five thousand A J.
Yeah, sorry, the cola note was broke, uh, broken in, uh, in the homeland, where we can't, uh, expose our camera and ourselves. Please bear with us.
Is it not the homeland that I represent to, that I cannot find my cola note plate? I should be a big job. This is not the first one.
No, well, we will show him here, we wash the plate and, uh,
Okay, um, I only need to see the plate, so that I can take, uh, my own, uh, part of it with five thousand A J. But, uh, since, uh, I can't find the plate, and you cannot show me now, I, I am dropping, uh, on the table, the cola, five thousand A J, they own.
God bless you.
See, how can we meet you?
Okay. Honorable Sani, I wouldn't know if our A P M is ready for his, uh, address, or do we continue with?
I think, uh, I think Mama comfort, I have her hand, uh, raised for a long time.
Okay, because.
Thank you for what you are doing, uh, because, and I greet all of you in, in Jesus's name. A P M, I greet you. And I call them all the ministers that are here as well. We could all offer you a call, um. Um, today, and I am so happy that, uh, this, this group has put this thing together, and it has been, it looks successful, successful, and I thank God for everybody who has donated. Uh, come, you know, with thirty A J M this evening. God bless you. Thank you, I appreciate you.
Uh, Bishop, thank you so much, thank you. I'm called the number, please, can you bring down your hands? Let's have, uh, Honorable Chima.
Uh, there were no. There were no, there were no, um. I see, uh, it's, uh, she, uh, 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 oh, gee. But I know, I'm here, five thousand miles, now, Iboji, no, no, that's right. I'm on, I'm on, I mean, in your comment, I'm going to use, I'm on, uh, that's more, that's more Iboji, I'm going from here, maybe two hundred thousand A J will be.
Oh, wow.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you. We appreciate. We appreciate you, Honorable Chima. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We thank you so much, Honorable Chima. Um, can we have you again? You're always consistent.
Yes, they won't know, they won't know. Update from Wada, Ijoma. Only where Africa, it will afford. My mind a matter. Go central region town hall meeting. My daddy Joma, they were Africa. Two thousand AJ from InfoMasia. From InfoMasia. So, I'm where, I'm where fine, I'm where why I pull it back, my people, uh, Allah Ba been waiting. Honorable, okay, make para mistake, we're popo Allah Ba again, because I maintain oh. Now, uh, as all do, only Woji, only thing do Woji. Woji will listen now to why because they won't.
They won't.
They won't. They won't.
Honorable Honor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Honorable Honor.
Okay, so I want one single soul left over there. Thank God.
Honorica, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I thought, um. Honorable, Uncle the Number, you use money to speak. So did we still or confirm what is said with money as well before we endorsed it?
He, he, yes, yes.
I'm putting two thousand AJ in support of, uh, Uncle the Number. I, I, I find the, uh, uh, money again, because.
So that is total of our money.
Yeah, okay, and there were, uh, sorry, I have, shall I counter?
Yeah, enter, enter.
Uh huh, okay, and there were actually Emma, who, 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 they're too rush, rushing for everything. I, I've been waiting, uh, to know what will come out of this motion. So first of all, I'll use twenty thousand AJ to counter that motion raised by Uncle the Number.
How do you go?
Yes, with, uh, with.
What are you calling it if you can't tie it?
Uh, okay, uh, wait, um, one.
Wait, uh, master, wait. Uh, please, anybody that is to talk in this very motion, you have to use a Jema to talk inside the motion. Yes. Because I had a minister come for contact now, he, he not, he not tell us why. And now she's talking. So if you want to talk in this motion, you have to talk with a Jema to counter or to seal. So, master, okay, continue.
So, okay, thank you, thank you very much. The first time I'm getting justice in this, in this platform. Thank you, Honorable. So, uh, what, why I countered that motion is to correct the impression. Uh, actually, uh, Allah Ba is not a Yoruba or Odu Dua, uh, award. Uh, Allah Ba is a form of an acronym, abbreviation as our people used to identify the baton. Baton, you know, in those days, the police, what they are known for is the baton, the stick. That they used to, used to, it is that stick, that in form of, uh, uh, baseball, baseball, uh, uh, um, uh, stick. That is what we know Allah Ba, the police in those days, and that is why, where that name come from. And it came from the word from Bend area. Allah Appara. In a Bend area, there is also a word relating to, uh, Allah, my, I said, my logaaka. My loga, my logaaka, that is said, uh, no word. That area, Abreba, Hafia and that area. So from that word, we now nickname it. On your, uh, my loga appara, my loga appara. But is also an Igbo, Bafran word. So in form of that stick, that is known with the police in those days. Gotoma, banana, gotoma, that is what, you hear that, what I, I, I talk through. Where's your, how long it that to see, you start to talk through. So it is from there that the nickname comes. Agey nickname, yeah, they are law para, uh, they are law para. Yes, so that is where that name come. It sounds a, a Yoruba word, but it is not a Yoruba word. That is just a, a combination of these two abbreviated Igbo, uh, uh, dialectical words with, uh, uh, Allah, Ilo, Aka, Elo.
Yes, just to slap or to beat.
Yes, it's a slang, uh, kind of. Another reason, the I G you suggested is not a known word, it's also a contaminated one. Uh, they said that, uh, for, uh, two, uh, between two evils, you must choose one. So this one is, um, indigenous African word as to say, assuming it is. Uh, compared to this one that is also rare, I go, adulterated, the British word, I G, Inspector General. No, so that is why I have to counter that motion. So anyone who want to support him can now come up and, uh, you know, put something on the table and support the EU. Uh, we love our, uh, on your, on your Woji for, uh, residents and, oh, please, they, they, they title, I beg you, off it, they are well, well. They hold their cap, please, let him wear it. So Uncle the Number, his hand is still up. Yes.
Hmm, I, I support, okay, uh, Allah Ba, I, we love Allah Ba. So forty thousand goes to, okay, and Allah Ba, that's my support.
Thank you, thank you, one of them, man.
Okay, um, twenty thousand AJ, twenty thousand AJ, twenty thousand AJ. To counter, I could ever. Allah, uh, uh, Allah Ba, Allah Ba, Allah Ba, Allah Ba, Allah Ba, Allah Ba, Allah Ba. Allah, on your, on your, see, Allah Ba, so, mostly, that, 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 that one, the particular one we pronounce.
Have also, Mora, I saw, see, Mora, Mora.
Done, hold on, hold on, hold on. If I talk again, you have to pay. If I must talk, you have to pay. Yeah, that. So, Allah Ba, Allah Ba, calling before that, that one is Yoruba, uh, this thing, it's nowhere known. If the animal who, who know what is Allah Ba, okay, so maybe do what. I want to tell you that, I, you, my, the I G, you may not like that one, but you can call her, or the, or the B U. Or the B U, yes, but that one, um, Allah Ba, it sounds somehow, it sounds so, uh, derogatory. Or it sounds so sheep, our, our, yeah, it's too beautiful to be, as I call it Allah Ba, look at that one now, or what you Allah Ba. Uh, you, you look at it now, very sortive, uh, I don't. The previous was said, yes, yes, yes. Make a name.
They were my, my honorable, honorable parawa. That they were, they were, my A P M, I can, I'm. All my brethren, yeah, of Central, they won't know. I don't know, um, I don't know, so, um, concerning the argument on the table, I'm just gonna, there is one, um. One video that I watched, it was proving that Yoruba is actually corrupted Igbo that they are speaking. Okay, he said that the Yoruba language, he mentioned that several words, how they corrupted it and turned it into Yoruba. So that's where I'm gonna leave that one. But then the, the more important, more serious one is, um, I want to support what, uh, Uncle the Number said, the warning that he sounded. This is the very precarious period for our people back home. Okay, we should tell our people to be prepared, be vigilant, okay, as we said during the war. Only deal about, about, other, 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 okay, so, our people need to be very vigilant. So, uh, Coach, I have him myself, who I've been listening to what he's saying, his very, very, um, secretive prediction that he made. Are always on, on point. He said that the, that the Polynesians, um, they, they proved out. Like a, a week ago or so, but then they have come back with more, more than a thousand. And he said that the police are aware of it and they have arrived at Kogi. So, but they are still trying to head down south. So, so every one of us should be very, very security conscious. Our people should not be, should not be, you know, take this one lightly. This is a period where they know that this is their time. Either they get to, get to the ocean now or they will never make it. Because, uh, you know, they, they, they know that the US is coming and we are getting help. So please warn everybody to be very, very security conscious, okay? All, all you do here, you just go, you know, be careful, be vigilant. Um, you know, one people, everybody to be conscious. Uncle the Number mentioned that if you see them. Don't just pay blind eye, investigate those people, you know, investigate them. Monday, I have to say, paint up, okay, paint that is, you know, tell them, you don't want to paint anything, and you don't want to see them around that place anymore. Okay, so we won't count. And then to, um, I'm going to represent my E K, the number people. With, uh, and welcome A P M to Central Region with a hundred and fifty AJ, man. All right, my A P M, welcome. We keep praying for every one of you, especially our angels, our holy angels back in the land. We pray for you folks, um, most I will surely grant us victory. We are almost there. So, if nobody should have entered it, don't mind the Shenyangans, these people are doing, they are just exposing themselves. And, uh, like one of them was talking about, uh, the, you know, about prison, prison behavior. I told him, yes. The prison rules you stated is, is, is for you, by the time you're gonna get there soon. And when you get there, all these rules you stated, you find that they don't apply for you anymore. All right, so, so don't mind anybody that is trying to, to affect your faith. Just trust the most high, we're gonna get Biafra, and we're almost there. Thank you, Biafra, thank you, my, my brethren. I will support today's town hall meeting with a hundred and fifty AJ, man. Um, my rep will confirm when I send in the receipt. Thank you. They won't.
Please, let it why I sing for Honorable Killers. Are, are we combining them?
Okay.
All, all right, thank you very much, my honorable Minister of Information and, and my honorable senior house. I will not waste much time. I, I'm just going to support with fifty thousand AJ, uh, for me. Thank you very much. And I also, uh, support the adoption of, uh, Odo, uh, Odo Miu. So I, I think maybe if we can keep it that way, but you know, uh, anyways, I will leave it there. Thank you very much. God bless each and every of us.
With, with ten thousand, with extra ten thousand AJ, making it fifty thousand, because. You catch me, you catch me for this. No, my hand was there up now, you know, go down, you go there up until you will be afraid with this church order. Anyways, no, no, thank you so much, my, my colleague, D P. Uh, I go to call my lady Allah Ba, Allah Ba, very, very sortive. O W, only O W, with the ten thousand AJ, totally is, um, uh, forty thousand plus thirty thousand. Total money I have to pay here is seventy thousand. Please, I hope you, um, um, no, eighty thousand. Fifty before plus twenty, plus ten, that is eighty thousand. Hey, so that is it. That's the total, I have to pay. So, uh, we, what that, O W, only O W, or, or, or those new, or those new. Not Allah Ba, Allah Ba must will be website, we have to bring another one. I know, I.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, Alan. I don't, I don't, I don't. Never see light, please, and say bring torch again. Yeah, so. Now, boy, I only Woji. Yeah, so. You have got a boy, I only Woji, only Woji, I hate you, manah. I got boy, I only Woji, so he did fifty thousand AJ. Yeah. One more, one more, one more. Yeah. I hope he has been very well, should I explain what I said? Okay, yeah. And, yeah, we, and again, remember, we have to be very careful, everything, everything, I know we are, we are. We have to do the right here.
Alan, I, I.
Right now, Peter, you see what?
Okay, before, 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 before I make my delay, just, uh, uh, A P M will give you speech, but on this, uh, on this matter that is on ground, I want to.
We might not forgive or forget. We still have the pain in our heart. Knowing how the massacre Biafran people. Seeing how millions of innocent childrens are being starved to death. It's painful when we reflect and think about what they did to us. We Biafran Christians are trying, doing everything humbly possible. To try to pull the pieces back together, so we can live a normal life and move on. Before we re-declare Biafran in Latin Finland, December 2nd, 2024. We Biafrans, everywhere in Nigeria where you find a Biafran. They contribute to that society, they contribute to that community. They blend in, mingle, sometime even intermarry. Some Biafrans speaks Hausa. Futu language. More than the people that actually own the language. Some Biafrans speak Yoruba. More than the Yoruba people. Every city like Lagos. Biafrans are the economic hub of Lagos state. Biafrans develop Lagos state, that is a fact. They are the exporters and importers. Biafrans even stand there, swamping shithole area. And build businesses and houses there. They try live and let live. They try, they show humility. They show brotherly love. They show kindness. They try to forget the past and move on. But these terrorist neighbors that we have. They always want to remind us. What we try to forget. However, sixty seventy major generous. I mean over sixty seventy percent of major generous that bomb and kill Biafran people. Are from the Yoruba Oduwua Republic and the Middle Belt, of which Go On is from the Middle Belt. We sympathize with our brothers and sisters from the Middle Belt. I mean the Christians, I don't mean the terrorists. Over there, I mean the Christians because they see our brothers and sisters. With feel their pain and their sorrow. Is it because of the atrocity they commit against Biafran people? That is why what is happening to them today. They didn't see it coming. Where is Go On? He probably somewhere in United Kingdom, doing what? Receiving medical treatment or what? Why is it that Go On after killing Biafrans? He not able to build a well befitting medical center in Middle Belt? What a shame. What a disgraceful shit hole, gutter country. I keep saying it. If I have what it takes. We will have Stodum and Gomora, part two. I will say Chukwaki Kabi Amahuwa God in heaven, Jehovah. Let me do this. I will blow a drop test. And ask everyone who don't want to go down. With that shithole disgrace country called Nigeria. To come out of Nigeria. To come out of the zoo. That the zoo is about to go down. That the zoo have fallen. Everyone who adhere to that instruction. Will see the light of the day. Everyone who adhere to that instruction will live again. But whoever refuse to come out from that shithole country, I will burn everything down. Then we start a new generation. Who have a new beginning. A new beginning that will just be white and whiter than snow. A new beginning that will be pure. Where we have genuine and honest people. Because the evil of Nigeria. Is beyond human being imagination. I've never seen. At my age today, I have never seen any country that is so wicked. When I say wicked, hardcore wicked like Nigeria. Look at what happened in Lake Toget. Tunubu ordered military. To shoot Nigerian citizens even flying their green and white flag. They shoot these innocent protesters that are just asking, demanding for freedom. Demanding for a better country. And the government of that day, the government of Nigeria, kill these people. They order the military. Military that supposed to protect the civilians. They arm these militaries. These forcemen. To kill their own citizens. Why did America find themselves in Iraq? Back in the year. I believe two thousand. I believe two thousand and two thousand and two. Is it not because Saddam Hussein quote unquote have weapon of mass destruction? And he started destruction by killing his own people? According to the United States of America intel. When the government are supposed to protect his home people, his citizens. Result to be the enemy of the people. What does that say us you? That government have failed woefully. A failed state. Here in United States of America. Over twenty years ago. Somebody walked to me while we are discussing, he told me. That Nigeria is a failed state, over twenty years ago. If you are one of those believing in Nigeria. You need to visit a psychiatrist hospital. You need to be evaluated. We just want to make sure your brain is working properly. Can you tell me one thing? Nigeria have offer you. That you saw, that you'll be so proud, wherever you go. You will tell people I'm in Nigeria. Here in Darsporak, once you mention the name Nigeria. First of all, the ID you or profile you. They already start looking at you like a criminal, like who knew. Because they know Nigeria breed criminals. Peter Obi. Former Breast癌 candidate made it clear. Peter Obi said Nigeria breed criminal. If Nigeria breed criminal. The current president of Nigeria is a drug lord, Tunubu. That is why Tunubu cannot visit United States of America here. Because back in the eighties, he is charged and indicted. On drug charges. What about Shetima? Shetima is a co-founder of Boko Haram. Is what Obi said, is he making sense? That Nigeria breed criminals. The number one citizen of this disgrace shithole country called Nigeria. Of which we call Nigeria Zoo Animal Kingdom. Because. A lot of people that don't want to do what is right behave like zombies. When you try to save their life, they ask you question, why are you saving my life? Just like someone in middle of the ocean. Being drowned, are you trying to save that person's life? And this person will in turn ask you. Why are you dragging me out from this deep water? Of which just less than few seconds or minute. That person will be drowned. Some people instead of choosing light. They decide to choose darkness. Nigerian citizens. Can say that Nigeria is not working for them. And they still decide to fall victim. In this shithole country called Nigeria. There is no steady electricity. In this disgrace shithole country called Nigeria. There is no seaweed system. In this disgrace country called Nigeria, there is no good infrastructures. In this shithole country called Nigeria. There is no. Good hospitals. No good schools. Everything in that country is shithole disgrace. Instead of the people of Nigeria to embrace light. Over seventy eighty percent choose darkness. When they know their problem. They refuse to speak up. They are let pick up just for per se, just for. To say, oh, I say something. My fellow citizens, if you're a Biafran. You are not fighting for Biafran. You don't believe in Biafran, you are a Nigerianist. Just few days ago. Obi Kubana. Said something about the sentencing of our leader Mazin Namdekan. As this one Nigerianist. Where have him been for the past ten years? Since twenty twenty one, when our leader Mazin Namdekan was kidnapped from Kenya and the extraordinary rendition. They are extraordinary rendition him from Kenya, Obi Kubana. We haven't hear your voice. But you dare have him from Mermet here and there. Going about your normal business. But you forgot. The terrorists, they are in your land, trying to take over your land. Obi Kubana forgot. That these terrorists are raping his family members. What about the one they call Kubana Chief Priest, the same? Where have these people been these years? What about Iweala something, the former World Bank Director or whatever? They have not be speaking. But lately, they just want to say something. These people are one Nigerianist. We know who you people are. What about Bianca? This Jezebel evil woman. That will live in cause for the rest of her life, very evil. When it's time to arrest Mazie Simon Ewa in Finland. This evil Jezebel quickly run to Finland to have meetings. Evil woman. Cause woman. When it's time for United States of America to intervene against the killing of Christians. In Biafranland. And against the killing of Christians in Nigeria. This evil woman quickly ran to United States of America. After the sentencing of Mazin Namdekan. The same evil woman stated. That is not the decision or what they expected. What is this evil Jezebel woman expect? These are people that want our leader dead. Nigeria breed criminals. The same way they breed a pretty to be a criminal. A fraudster. For some time, he been quiet. Just trying to monitor what is going on. For few days now, he's already in his campaign. Start to talk about twenty twenty seven. Why his fellow Biafran been persecuted? Why Biafrans have been beheaded by this Islamic jihadist terrorist? Why Biafran land is being militarized by this terrorist country called Nigeria? Peter Obi, evil man. He don't see that, he don't speak about. Iweala or whatever, they don't see that, they don't talk about. Obi Kubana and companies don't talk about. Is it the illegitimate governors, these useless people? That have sold their soul to the devil. With this, their evil occult chamber, dark evil, cultists they all belong to. The one from a former Abba called Otie. Short engine, he ran out to say he have a solution. He's coming with a new strategy, are these fool? For how many years now? Where is that strategy? They can scam us, deceive us. Do all manner of ways with their evil. How to bring the Biafran people down? How to destroy us? But we promise them. We will never forget. It might take time, the mind slow, the process of our total freedom. But our promise is that we will never forget. We hold all of them accountable. Hope holds the mind. I hope you are happy now. Are the man who you supposed to call your brother? You allow the enemy to mishandle him. To jail him, to torture him, to kill his mother, his father. I don't know how you evil people sleep. So Ludo. I don't know if you have shame at all. Five years ago, you run to people of Anambra. You play the game. You won the vote. That you will be able to release Mazin Namdekan. Just to deceive the people of Anambra to vote for you. Today you don't talk about Mazin Namdekan. Is there a member, Omai? Where is devil Omai? Where is the former governor of Abia State, Ogikal, Ozogikal? My fellow citizens, have you all forget about Russia, Supro Russia? We need to compile all these evil people then. Time is coming, we will visit all of you. One after another. If we don't get hold of you. We will get hold of your wife because you all work together. None of you family members have come to condemn what you all are doing. You and your family members are all in this together. We come after you. If you're not available, your wife, your children, everything. That answer, your name, your last name, your first name, your lineage. We hold them accountable. All of them. Will not forgive, will not forget, unless. If you call people come out and correct this mess. Even if I you are back. If I you are back might have passed away, we did not forget your family. Because that's your evil blood. We don't want this evil. Children. That you have. Live in Biafranland to come and be a problem tomorrow. They will answer. When the judgment of Biafran begin. All the subordinates, all the evil people pack your load. Go to Zamfara. Go to Abuja, go to somewhere else. Go and live there, leave Biafranland alone. Will not forgive you people. All of you that conspire. To call us name, to tag us, to call us terrorists of which we are not terrorists. If Biafran people are terrorists, I am Maziokechukun Krue. I will not be going to Washington, they have a meeting with top US lawmakers. The men and women that make laws that govern this free world. We are not terrorists, they know that. They know we are fighting a just cause. Cause to be free. From this Islamic jihadist terrorist, from this Fulani husband, from this this shithole country. Country that if I have what it takes. I will burn it to ashes. I'm not taking my word back. Because that country called Nigeria have destroyed thousands and millions of innocent souls alive. Every day. When you go to social media. You turn on the TV. News that are coming from that country is all about. This amount of people have been massacred. This amount of people have been kidnapped, have been beheaded. What a shithole disgrace country. You that it have never getting to might think. You are safe. You are not. If it don't get to you now, it will get to you tomorrow. If it is not your turn today, it might be tomorrow. And for those that are laughing. Thinking it's business as usual. You are just laughing at your debt. Years ago. When our leader Mazin Namdekan. Keep preaching the gospel that is Islamic jihadist terrorists, they are coming, they are in your forest. Even in the southwest forest, in the Oduwua Republic people's forest. They were laughing at him, they call him name. But today. The Yoruba people are crying too. My problem with them is that if they know Nigeria is not working. If they know their land is being terrorized by this Islamic jihadists. Why have they colluded with the same Fulani government? Why have they colluded with the same Fulani people? To work against Biafran freedom. It's true, we have some sabotages, we have enemy within. We know how we deal with our enemy within. But for the Oduwua Yoruba people, I don't see any reason why they derive joy. In killing Biafran people. In working against Biafran's freedom. If the Yoruba people have not joined the Middle Belt. And the north part of Nigeria. To fight against the Biafran people. The outcome of. The war would have been different. But our Basanjo proudly go harder with the Yoruba troops. To support the Nigerian terrorist government. To kill Biafrans for us to surrender. Biafran people did not surrender because we are losing the war. It's because of the children that are dying in thousands every day because of the blockades. Caused by the British evil people. Britain. How far? British government, I believe you are smiling, you are doing good. Because the same terrorists that you all support to fight against Biafran people. They are now in your doorstep. There is some part of Britain today. That you cannot even preach the gospel of our Lord Jesus Christ. There is some part of Britain today. That even the British citizens. Can't even have freedom or speech. Can't even express themselves. They will stone them to death. Some part of Britain today practice Sharia law. Could have been a welcome development. If the British Empire with the Russians. If they can come and welcome all these Islamic jihadist terrorists to their own country. Since they love them so much. Since they decide to work with them. Since they can coexist with these terrorist groups, with these Islamist terrorists. I believe it will be a welcome development. If they can invite over these twenty two terrorist group in Nigeria today. And give them a safe heaven for them to live in Liverpool, in Manchester. In Arsenal. That will be a welcome development. Because they can coexist, because they love them so much. What a shame how the mighty. What a shame how the mighty are falling. We played with the leader of the free world, United States of America. I am Mazio Gekuchuncre, acting Prime Minister of Biafran Republic, government in Azar. I've been saying this for some time now. What happened in Afghanistan? We played with United States of America not to let that happen. If America sponsor or fund Nigerian military in the name of to fight these terrorists or to counter these terrorists, that means automatically United States of America is part of this killing of Christians. Because any arm that end up in the hand of Nigerian terrorist state, the Nigerian terrorist state, we use the same arm to kill the innocent Biafran Christians and the innocent Christians in Nigeria. And if United States of America decide to do that, we want to remind them that means they part and person of a country that sponsor terrorism. We want them to practice what the, to practice what they preach. If they preach to fight the terrorists, they should disease from sponsoring Nigerian military. Over eighty percent of Nigerian military personnel are a terrorist. If United States of America in the name quote unquote that they are going to work with the Nigerian state in the name of to counter terrorism, we want to tell the United States of America that they are part of those that are killing the Christians. It's best they work with Biafran DDF to counter this terrorism. We want to remind them what happened in Afghanistan. After America train over two hundred thousand personnel and America spent billions of dollar, if not trillion, not one billion, not two, not three. And all the military hardware, the fighter jets of America, the finest of all, different type of equipment. After the United States of America withdrew from Afghanistan. The Afghanistan military surrender everything to Taliban. And who is the governor of Afghanistan today? They are the same people America call terror, they are the same Taliban. And the Taliban are using the military hardwares that America left with the Afghanistan military, they are using it to sponsor terrorism all over the world. In Nigeria today, where you have over twenty-two terrorist groups, America finest hardwares, weapons are in the hand of Boko Haram, are in the hand of ISIS, are in the hand of Islam. We played with United States of America to trade with caution to stop sponsoring terrorism. When you allow your military hardwares to end in the hand of the terrorists, automatically you are not practicing what you preach. Automatically you sponsor the terrorists. You can go behind closed door and sponsor the terrorists and come on camera and talk about how you will fight the terrorists. Work with Biafran Defense Force that are fighting against these terrorists that have come to kill the Biafran Christians. If Biafran again have freedom today, Biafran land can be a safe heaven for the Christians from Middle Belt, from Benwell, from Platoon. They can come to Biafran land, we welcome them. And when we regroup all, we regroup ourselves in Biafran land and liberate the Middle Belt. If the Middle Belt are not ready to fight to liberate their land, we urge them to support the Biafran people. After Biafran land is totally liberated, we all, with full power, liberate the Middle Belt. And for the Odudua Yoruba Southwest, if they are not ready to leave Nigeria, we don't want them to be stumbling block. We don't want them to be stumbling block for Biafran freedom. We don't want what happened in nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen seventy to repeat itself. When our wall was supposed to go, re-declare Odudua Republic, rather they collude with the Nigerian terrorist state to fight the Biafran people. Few days ago, I heard where some are saying our problem is not the Yoruba. Our problem is the Biafrans that are sabotaging what we are doing. If you go to Israel today, while Israel is fighting Hamas, trying to kick the terrorists out of their land or trying to destroy these terrorists, Israel has saboters among them. Israel have some Israelis that are working against them. It, it is normal. If you go to Russia today, not every Russia believe that Putin make the right decision to fight or to invade Ukraine. You have some Russians that are working against the Russian people and the Russian. If you go to Ukraine today, you have some Ukrainians that are working against Ukraine. Even here in United States of America, never a time that everyone will come to agree, hundred percent. You also have those that will sabotage the effort of United States of America. That is the fact. We don't want the Odudua Republic to point fingers to Biafrans that are sabotaging the Biafran people and use that as excuse that we are the problem or our problem is from us. Leave our problem with us. They are our people. When we deal with that, every country in the world, they have their domestic problem. We don't want the Yoruba people to interfere because of that and use that as excuse because of this unity within us, within our people. If you are a Biafran living in the north, we plead with you. Consider relocating. Consider investing in Biafran land. If you are Biafran living in the southwest, we plead with you. Your life is very important. We love you. We want you to leave. We don't want you to be a victim when time come. We don't want you to be a victim of these people that hate you with passion. Consider relocating to Biafran. Consider investing in your own territory. Consider investing in your own land. Consider making your land, the Biafran land, great again. Consider making your land, the Biafran land, safe again. Consider making your land, Biafran land, secure again. Consider making your land, Biafran land, wonderful and inhabited, inhabitable again. Don't come with no excuse that there is no security in your land. You can make a difference. You can sponsor and fund our security. Your help is needed. Your home is your home. Recovered few years ago, during the chumbo evil election of that shit hole demonic country called Nigeria. In the Yoruba land, in the Yoruba territory, especially in Lagos, when some of you went there to cast your vote, what happened? They asked you to go back to your own Biafran land and do what? And vote? At the time, they used the word that you don't belong there. They tell you go home. The same country that some of you are doing everything you can to be part of. The same country that some of you are doing everything you can to be accepted, to wait, to be welcomed. They are telling you both directly and indirectly that you are not in Nigeria. I, Chinese, shine your eye, my fellow citizens. When the so-called country Nigeria reject you, call you name that you are not in Nigeria, is it not high time you fight for who you are? Is it not high time you fight as a Biafran? In the same so-called country that supposed to be a secular country or nation, Nigeria is never a nation, it just is a fraudulent country. You have two laws. One law for the north, one law for the south. What does that tell you? My fellow citizens, do you want to be governed by Sharia law? Sharia law is not law of our land. We don't know what is hell, what is, what that is. We have our own laws. We have our own way of life. We have our own lifestyle. We have our own religion, we are Christians. We are Biafrans. We are not Muslim. We don't worship the god of Allah, Kobakho that like to kill innocent children. We don't worship the god that suck the blood of the innocent. We don't worship the god that behave women, children. We don't worship the god that rape women. We don't worship the god that treat women like second-class citizens. We don't worship the god that treat women like animals. We don't worship the god that don't give women freedom. Our own god in our land gave women the privilege, the same with the men. Our own god in our land created us all equal. Created us all to respect ourselves. Created us all to love one another. Created all us to live and let live. Create all of us, both the men and women, to play a vital role in our society. That is why over hundreds and thousands years ago, even till today, our mothers, our women can address a whole congregation in Biafran. They have said when there is problem, they are invited to come and there preside and judge and rule over matters. Because we treat them equal and we respect them. That is the god we worship. Look at what is happening today. Honorable Minister of Information, please, there is this video I want you to play of Sheku. Shekugumi, I believe that's this terrorist name. Please, can you just play this video where I, I wrote up this address here today, please, it's very important. It's AI. Alright, thank you very much. But according to what that video is saying, that is exactly what is happening in Nigeria. Nigeria have two different system. One system to the north. One system for the south. The northern part of Nigeria, I don't know, last time I check, what is this course? For a student to be admitted into the university, Honorable Minister of Information, what is this course for, for the north?
Three percent.
And what is, what about? And my fellow citizens, and you want to tell me, is, is one country, right, one Nigerian? Tell me what make it one. We are the north, we score one percent to be admitted into the university. And the south will score ten percent before they can gain admission. And what about employment? The north have over hundred percent chances of being employed than the south. Why the south have less than twenty, thirty percent of being employed? And you tell me is the same country. Mazinamdekan, what is his crime? His crime is to have a better country. At the time where he start his campaign for freedom, he asked for restructuring. The same that our leader Ojuku asked for. Restructuring. Like the north, they can practice their Sharia. The south can practice what they want to practice. The north can manage their resources. The south can manage their resources. And at the end, the north will come with a percentage ties to the federal. The south will come with same percentage ties to the federal. So we can all practice federalism. What happened? They turn it down. Our leader Mazinamdekan tried, it didn't work out. He try everything he can humbly possible. Then when he found out that this Islamic jihadist country, what they trying to do is to turn Nigeria to Islamic country, to Islamize the whole region. And for Islam to dominate and to rule both the Christians, how will you, how will you as a Christian even survive in a Sharia law? How will you as a Christian survive with law that you know nothing about? For you to survive, you have to succumb to their religion. You have to be Islamized. You have to abandon your god, Jehovah God, Chukwukabian and worship their god that rape women and children. You have to abandon your god and worship their god that love terrorism. For you to survive, you have to abandon your lord and save your Jesus Christ. And worship their god. Of the jihadist. That is exactly what they want. Then when our leader Mazin Nandikano find out that we can never be Islamized. We can never leave our god. We not ask for our separate country. So we can go back to who we are over hundred and twenty-two thousands years ago. That is the reason why he was fighting for freedom of his people. They did not arrest him for any weapon, gun or machine. According to quote-unquote what they arresting for. That they arresting with, holding a microphone. That he's inciting violence, that he's expressing the gospel of freedom. He's educating his people how to be free from this disgraced country. Just few days ago, after they kidnapped him. They extraordinary rendition him from Kenya in twenty-twenty-one. They pronounce. Jail sentence yesterday, two, a few days ago. Then what about Sheku Gumi? What about all these terrorists that Tinubu? And the Tinubu wife that call herself a Christian? And Shetiman, Boko Haram. They knew where all these terrorists hide at. Tinubu and Shetiman, the government of Nigeria, sponsor the terrorists with millions and billions. Why didn't they go after them and arrest them? These terrorists that are killing children that they have identified. How many of them have they brought to book and arrest? And sentenced them either to life imprisonment or whatever. Last time we check, all they do is to reinstate them, reintegrate them. Not just to the society, but to the military. That is why over eighty percent of the military of Nigeria today are terrorists. We wanna send a strong message to the leader of the free world. A president that we so much respect. President Trump. Please, you and Secretary of War. Pet, uh, Peti. Please kindly don't sponsor these terrorists. Please kindly don't sponsor Nigeria terrorist state. Why we use the word terrorist state? Because Nigeria sponsor terrorists. That's what make them terrorists. Please, we plead. Don't let any of the United States. Military hardware land in the hand of Nigerian government. The Takona, the Takona jet that was sold to Nigeria a few years ago. They use the jet to bomb Biafran Christians. Minister of Information, I don't know if you can get this picture of. Where these terrorists. With the, the US weapon that, that show that that weapon belonged to the United States of America. Armed forces. But it managed to land in the hand of the Nigerian terrorists. Sometime you ask question, how did this get to these terrorists? And just few days ago. The children, the kids that were kidnapped from the school. I think the news that we are getting is that the Nigerian terrorist state negotiate with this. Bandits or you call them terrorists and pay them. In millions of billions to secure the release of this student. That money that they pay to these terrorists. What do you think the terrorists will do with it? To get more weapons. This is a playbook. This is a playbook of the Nigerian government with the terrorists. They know what they are doing. This is part of the ways and means the federal government sponsor the terrorists. They sponsor the terrorists by this kidnapping. They play along and allow these terrorists to kidnap. Student, children, people, whatever you call it. And the same government will in turn. Go in the name of negotiating with these terrorists. And pay these terrorists a huge amount of money. We appreciate the central region of Biafraland for this wonderful Tahoe meeting today. And we appreciate. The reps and the admin, the administration. And all the coordinators, please don't let your spirit be weakened. The Nigerian terrorist think by holding our leader Mazin Nandikano. That will stop our freedom. We promise them, if anything happen to our leader Mazin Nandikano. If anything. They must make sure that he's alive and healthy. But for sure, what we are doing, we releasing. If you are not be part of this. Freedom, please. After everything that is happening. After the way they try to humiliate we Biafran people. Trying to weaken our spirit, trying to break us down. If you are not funding this great movement, I don't know how you sleep. If you don't break your heart seeing what they do to our leader Mazin Nandikano. I don't know whether you a Biafran or not. And for some of you, I know we are so emotionally attached to him. But we just wanna let you know that. The Nigerian terrorist state, what they are doing now is the last game they have. They are doing everything they are doing to see if they can weaken his spirit, they can break him down. And as well. To weaken us. To break us down. Is high time all of us we set our eyes on the prize. The harder we hit Nigerian terrorist state. Like I said in our last Tahoe meeting. We need the logistics. We need things that we can use to liberate our land. And if you're in Biafraland, you know what to do. Anything that represent Nigeria, don't let it stand, bring it down. If it is the oil that belong to us that they extracting one way or the other way. If you can disrupt it. It's your oil, it's our property, it's your property, you own it, do it. Hold everything accountable. If it is the oil that is leaving from our land, hold that oil accountable. Tell this oil, this man, tell these guys that you going nowhere. Instead of that, your oil to leave from water. Instead of that oil from our suburb, from data, from a car, from nowhere, from an energy. Instead of that oil to leave to Makodi, tell this oil, come back here. You going nowhere. Tell the oil, the oil belongs to you. It's your right. It is your oil and gas. You own it. Whoever have problem with that, you come and tell us that they have problem with that. Then we'll find how to solve the problem. Anything that belong to your land, don't let it out. Anything that belong to Biafran, belong to Biafran. The oil and gas is our own. Shell gas station, NUPC, all these foreign gas, all these foreign enterprise in our land. That know that what they are doing is wrong. It's high time they do what is right and come to the Biafran people. And let us negotiate and talk and do business together. I'm aware what happened in nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen seventy. The negotiation, what they trying to have with our leader, Ojuku and Philip Ephim. Whatever went right or wrong that time can as well be corrected. But what belong to us, belong to us. Will be the one to give the conditions. Of what belong to us. But what we promise any company is that we'll do business in genuine with good faith. We'll do business that you will be happy and the Biafran people will be happy. And remember, Biafran first. It must be for the interest of Biafran people first. But whatever we have in our land, we can share it with the entire world. As long as it benefit us first. And in extension, the whole world will benefit from it. We are not selfish or greedy. We are open to business. It's better you come and do business with the Biafran people. Now, before it is too late. Because time is coming. You might not have the opportunity or the chance to do business with Biafran people. Time is coming that we might choose to look for other company. We know we have a lot of company from United States of America and from Britain, Britain and other con, countries as well. It's time you all come and negotiate and work with the Biafran people. We open our hands for that discussion. But what happened in nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen seventy will not repeat itself. And for the Hausa Fulani jihadist people. If they think that what happened in nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen seventy, we, we repeat itself and favor them. They miscalculate. The war, the genocide war from nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen seventy. Over ninety-nine percent of the Middle Belt believe in one Nigeria and they support the north. This time around. Last time I checked, over eighty percent of Middle Belt, they don't believe, they wanna work with the north. Last time I checked. The Odudua Republic, the Yoruba people, they either here or not. Over fifty percent might decide not to work with the north. At the end, it will favor the Biafrans, it will favor the Middle Belt, and also going to favor the Odudua Republic. It will be wise and reasonable if the Yoruba, if the Yoruba people to stop colluding with the Fulani husband. If they will stop colluding with Nigerian terrorist state. We understand they are broader, Tinubu is the one in charge. But they should remember that Tinubu will not be there forever and life move on and life goes on. Please, my fellow citizens, know your enemy, tread with caution. If possible, move your business. From Lagos. Remember before the war. Our leaders, then Ojuku and Philip Ephim. Encourage Biafrans. To move back to the north. And for many that did not leave the north back to east, they were all killed, massacred. By the same Hausa Fulani people. We encourage you, invest in Biafraland. Invest in your security in Biafraland. The land belong to you. Don't let your land be overrun by these invaders. Obi Kubana, if these invaders take over your land, Odogu Ebue, where will you go? Ee money, if these invaders take over your land, chase your parents, if they still alive. Your siblings, your uncle, nephews from your land, where will you go? Are you going to go to Ambazodion? You might not be welcomed. All the celebrities in our land that are not speaking up, don't be a coward. Support your freedom so your people can be proud of you and also celebrate with you. And all these illegitimate governors that have decide to kill Biafran people. This is from what you are doing because it will not end well. When this storm will be for you. You cannot escape it. Because we definitely get to you. We definitely hold you accountable, you and your entire household. Or you better move. Just like. Oh, the drunkard caller Willie Obi Anan. Do not reside in United States of America. I don't know why he find America as. A place of where he will be safe and comfortable with him. For him, after governing Anambra for how many years? He not able to put Anambra or build Anambra. In a way that he will retire in Anambra. Because they never believe in the Nigerian system. We wanna send a strong message to the Nigerian government. The war is washing. From Washington DC, they are pay key interest in what is happening. What just happened few days ago to our leader Mazin Nandikano. The Nigerian terrorist state have just shown themselves. How the judicial system, they have failed the global community. How corrupt they are, how biased they are, how evil they are. If they can jail innocent man who is fighting for his people. And they refuse to go after the terrorists. Rather they sponsor the terrorists. My fellow citizens, thank you from here. I believe that what is happening these few days. You can see that you are not in Nigeria. You are not part of Nigeria. They don't love you. From the Middle Belt to the South Wales. You can intermarry with them, do business with them. Live with them, play soccer with them, play football with them, go to church with them. But deep down inside them, they hate you with passion. They will stab you any minute of the day. That is why in Lagos state today. They are burning your businesses that worth millions of dollars, not even in Nigeria. That is why in Lagos state today, the Biafran Christian people. Their homes are be demolished by the same Nigerian government. Go to the north. That is why the Biafran Christians today in the north, your businesses have been bombed. Your home have been demolished. They don't love you. They don't like you. Don't force yourself into destruction. It's time. You build home. It's time you take your investment back to Biafraland. Move your companies back to Biafraland. They will be forced to come from north to buy your goods from Biafraland. They will be forced to come from Lagos state. To buy. Whatever products you manufacture from Biafraland, just the same way Biafrans travel from here to China. To go and import whatever that they sell. The same way Biafrans travel to Japan. That is the same way the Nigerian people will travel to Biafraland to buy whatever product you have. Thank you from here. Please, what we are doing now is what we release our leader Mazin Nandikano. The same way they have waged this war upon us. The same way we bring everything Nigeria done in our territory. The same way we destroy Nigeria with everything we have. The same way we would destroy Nigeria with everything we have. Bring your money, bring your fund. If you want our leader Mazin Nandikan out today, tomorrow. If you want Mazie Simon Eba to be released from Finland out today, tomorrow, let's go harder and burn this shit whole country down. They are monitoring our body movement. They are monitoring us. They are trying to see our respond. We have to respond. We must respond. In a war, when your opponent strike you, they wait and see how you respond. If you don't respond, they will keep bombarding you, striking you and striking you. Let's strike them back in a way that it will pain them. Thank you from here. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you from here. We appreciate everyone here today. Sorry that I take a little bit, uh, time longer than, than I anticipated. It's just that there's a lot to talk about. Biafra is here and, uh, from Washington DC, we'll do everything we can. Uh, we talked to US lawmakers, uh, to let them know what exactly happen, happening. It's not, uh, you know, uh, like how the Nigerian terrorist state are trying to, uh, portray it. What is happening in Biafraland and in Middle Belt is a genocide war. It's a calculated, uh, 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 plan. They have a map part Nigeria to Islamize the whole terrori- uh, territory. They try to conquer us. They try to conquer the whole region of Biafraland. What is happening now in Biafraland is jihadism, jihad, the Muslim, Allah Koba. There is nothing like moderate Muslim, normal or not normal or extreme, they are all the same. The moderate Muslims sponsor the, the, uh, extremist. The ones they call the estimate Muslim, whatever they are, they are their food soldier. These terrorists have been sponsored by Iran, by Saudi Arabia, Turkey and Syria and all these other Muslim, uh, country. It have been what they want. So if they con- succeed in conquering the territory of Nigeria, which they will not conquer Biafraland. Their goal is to conquer our land and lay their hand on the resources and use the resources to attack the whole entire world until they Islamize the whole world according to their, 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 their book of Muslim that said jihadism is the holy war of God. And that jihadism is for them to conquer Biafraland is part of it and is happening even in Europe today. So they now see what we are fighting against. Thank you very much from here. Please. Our website is open twenty-four seven. Kindly go and fund your freedom, support your freedom. If you want to hear result and see how fast we liberate our land, support your freedom, fund your freedom. We need to invade Nigeria from our land. Our land is our land. Hundred and ten years ago and above, we are not Nigerian. We can never be Nigerian. And what we are doing is what we release our leader Mazin Nandikan. It's a game. They are just playing a mind game. They are trying to see if, if our leader Mazin Nandikan can negotiate on political solution, maybe they, they probably be dreaming of twenty twenty-seven. Now will not happen. We know who our leader is. What gonna happen to them, they will be forced to come to negotiate and we make sure we rela- we release our leader Mazin Nandikan. Thank you from here. Thank you very much for this opportunity and for having me here in your midst today. I appreciate. Thank you very much.
There were PM. God bless you. Your time now. You are in another day and, uh, we should be rounding up with no distance time. Thank you so much. Um, freedom for your hand is up. Go ahead. Let's be concise of our time, please. Freedom for Biafra. Unmit yourself.
Yeah, hello. Good evening. Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Thank you all for all your effort. Yes, uh, from, from, from the little that comes from my way or to my way. I, I, I want to support with thirty A J M.
Thank you. Thank you, Wacheneke. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate. Thank you. We come to this, yeah. Edonge Boom, Admin, Edonge Boom, unmute yourself. Over to you. Admin, Edonge Boom, unmute yourself. Admin, Edonge Boom, ad- unmute yourself.
I'm getting old. Why I'm?
Admin, Edonge Boom is not ready. Uh, Rage and Fury, over to you.
Okay, am, am I coming out, sir?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. Honorable Acting Prime Minister, Your Excellency, thank you very much for that, uh, uh, for that, uh, wonderful speech that you just gave to us. Like we have always said, your word encourages, energizes us and it keeps us going. Thank you so much. I really appreciate. And, uh, the happiest father or the happiest ponder on earth is the one that has prepared his or her children to a point that even when he or she is not around, he is very confident. He is very confident that the children will carry out his or her legacy. That is the proudest father. That is the happiest father. So I must tell you that our leader Mazin Nandikan was very proud of us. Our Prime Minister Simon Epa was very proud of us. But only, uh, by the way, yeah, this is exactly what they were doing. What they were doing was to reform, fight for the freedom of their people, defend their people, defend the biggest women and children, the Christians, the civilians. This was all they were doing. Today they are available. The children they have raised continue in that legacy. So they are the happiest. I've done one time before, eh, and I will, who I'm going to take the colon with another one time on era on behalf of, uh, Isuku and Urobo State. And I am going to also support the speech of, uh, our beloved Acting Prime Minister with, uh, one thousand A J. So the total for today is going to be three thousand A J. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I hear the mic here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Rage. Thank you.
Biafran people, this is time, this is time that, uh, we need to buckle up our seat belts. Now, what we are be praying for since for Washington to start to discuss our course is happening. Everyone help those that help themselves. So we also need to help ourselves. We're not going to leave everything to the United States of America or Canada or any other country that wanna come to our rescue. So we'll be fighting, doing what we supposed to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, APN. Uh, we come to our honorable Reverend. Honorable Minister, over to you, sir.
Uh, thank you, Miss Alifnation. I appreciate you. Uh, and, uh, my APN, His Excellency, Honorable Reverend is special to me particularly. Uh, uh, you know, it's not, it's not flattering him. He has taken this role by this heart. And, and we are supposed to This meeting is being recorded. Get out there of us to, we already know what's going on, but those of us who are pretending as if, uh, we are chasing shadows, uh, he, he has already proven them very well. And for that speech, the real force, the fact that we, uh, right on course, uh, will support him with a hundred A J M, uh, bringing it to two hundred A J M for the city. There was, uh.
There were. Thank you, sir. God bless you.
There were. Thank you.
There were. There were. There was the Amnikan. Yeah, thank you so much. The floor is still open as we prepare to round up because of, uh, the time of our dear citizens from the homeland who have been here for the past, uh, five hours now. So if you have something to support, please do so. And in absence of that, we should be preparing to round up because this is, uh, almost, uh, one AM of Biafra time. Edonge Boom, Admin, over to you.
Charon Biafrans.
I come to.
Thank you, my minister. I'm an APN. Edonge Boom, I welcome you for your your resilience toward this very course of freedom. So Edonge Boom have supported this very town hall meeting of the Central Biafrans in the sum of fifteen thousand A J. Thank you very much, Minister of Information and Communication. Thank you. I admire.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to everyone. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So we need to round up, please, because, uh, time is on our side. Need to round up. Um, who should be taking the closing prayer should get ready, please. Good number, over to you. Your hand is up.
Yes, such, um, honorable APN. Thank you so much, uh, Margaret Herbos. Please, I want to, my fellow Biafrans, please, next fundraising, let us, uh, I am challenging everyone of us with a five-five new new members in this fundraising. Yes, Uncle Number is challenging you. If you fail, I will find you with ten thousand A J M. Thank you so much, APN. All of course must come with new five-five. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Wacheneke. Thank you. Thank you. Um, person I suppose to take the closing prayers. Uh, Chuku Karibia, Osissioma, are you there? Chuku Karibia, Osissioma. Are you there?
Good evening, Biafrans.
There were. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Our honorable APN, good evening from my side. Um, let me start by appreciating our, our almighty God for a day like this, for making it a reality for us. Uh, we are alive to see a day like this and, uh, thank God for what he has done today in this central region town hall meeting. I thank, uh, everyone of course who has participated, uh, in this, uh, in the success of this town hall meeting in one way or the other. Um, especially, uh, for those that, uh, that have given what they have given in support of this town hall meeting. Um, you know, uh, one thing I understand is that the terrorist state of Nigeria, if they see any way they can stop this hour gathering, our this fundraising, if they see a way to stop it final, final, so that we will not be generating any A J M or A J, they will do that. Because even the little we are doing, it causing more problem to, to them. But, uh, that is beyond their power because a God has made it to be so. I thank, uh, everyone, uh, who, who is always giving. Uh, let me speak this in Ebo. Please pardon me. Uh, Anna Makeke Ne, Onyabona. Ndenkeji A J M, Mandenkeji A J, when I fear Obodo, open Super Nigeria, Okaere. Uh, Adema. It is good that we always, uh, gather and do what we know how to do best. If you look at, uh, Nigeria as a whole, you will understand that the safest place now or the, or somewhere that is more guaranteed to stay is Biafraland. Raising because of Biafra government, because of our Biafra defense forces, they have made it to be so. With this little money, we always contribute. It is going a long way. So I encourage everyone of us to continue to do, uh, what we know how to do best. For those that are contributing, we, we all know how our pockets, uh, uh, most of us, we have little, some also have more. So let's keep, keep it on. Let us ne- never get tired because the fight for freedom is always difficult. But the, but by the help of Elohim, we will, uh, we will, we will be, become victorious in this fight for, uh, uh, freedom. Um, I thank our, our ever AP, APN for his speech. Uh, he has done a lot. He has done well. APN, I salute you, sir. It is not easy. So Cali this close, it is a heavy close, but God will continue to strengthen you. God will continue to guide and protect you. God will continue to see you through in your going out and your coming in. I pray that God will also continue to see us all through in everything that we are doing and are going out and are coming in, in the, eh, eh, in our various wars of hands. Uh, God will continue to provide for us. He will continue to enrich our pockets so that we will continue to give more for the, uh, success of our, uh, Biafra and, uh, our freedom. I thank everyone who have participated and I am also begging, uh, those who are still watching, those who are still hoping that, oh, this thing that is happening in Nigeria, it is far away from me, it is far away from us, it will not reach our side. It is almost there. Please, let us do what we have to do as early as possible so that we not also be, uh, will not also be affected by this, uh, evil invasion of these terrorists. Uh, I pray that God Almighty will continue to guide our, our Supreme Leader Mazin Nandikan, even, even in the detention where he is, God will continue to protect him. No evil shall before him. I commit our Ebu Prime Minister into his hand that Elohim will continue to intervene on his behalf. My prayer tonight is that this list for Biafra will never be in vain. God Almighty will continue to strengthen us. We will never lose courage. We will continue to fight until we'll, uh, we have our freedom. Because that is our desire. That is what we fight for. Our parents has fought for it. Up to this day, we are still fighting. Up to this day, we are still fighting. But I believe that God, who is in heaven, will never allow us to be destroyed as a people. I thank you all for participating in this town hall meeting. I will not forget to, uh, appreciate. Uh, our Central Region. Uh, Chairman and all the state admins for participating in this town hall meeting. I thank you all, uh, for what he has done. I pray that God will continue to see us through in everything. Thank you.
Deuwa. Deuwa. Honorable Minister, are you there?
Uh, thank you very much, greetings to everyone from Michigan is fifty. Mama nu.
Mama, what am I there? Thank you, thank you very much from Michigan, I asked Mazi, I asked a few yesterday.
Yeah, I was here yesterday.
Oh, okay, you know, Michigan made us proud few days ago, right?
We are here.
Uh, no, no, Congressman James, you know, he's from Michigan.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, he made us proud, sir, and. I believe, you know, Biafrans in Michigan, also we made him, you know, make him proud. Biafran Christians in Michigan.
Yeah, we are working on that.
Yes, it's one of us.
They're quick, they're quick.
Yeah, it's one of us, it's one of those voice. That speak for the oppressed people like Biafran Christians. You know, oppressed people all around the world, so just like Ted Cruz, we don't play with people like that.
Appreciate.
Thank you very much, Deuwa.
Deuwa.
Okay, Mazi Sunny, I think, let me just say, great, thank you, Central Region, thank you, all the honorable, I can see. See the face of our US rep, Amunekes smiling. So for those that don't believe Biafra is here, and that's your own business. But we know it's here. So everything they are doing is just to break and weaken our spirit, that will not work. So if it is not for Biafra, our leader Mazi Namdekan, you're not gonna be where he is today. So. He is where he is today because of our freedom and everything they are doing is to stop our freedom. That will not work. So we may be free. And we know why we are fighting for our freedom. One is we wanna be free and our children, our generation. Our family, our land, so everything is in play. Because we are not free, one, this Islamic jihadis. They will Islamize us, they will terrorize us, they will invade us, they will, actually they are, they are fight, they are invading on us, we are fighting, pushing them back. They will take over our land, chase us out of our land, land grabbing as well, so you know, they are, these people are wonders. They trying to grab our land and make it their own, I don't think that will work, so I don't see any reasonable human being. That we allow a stranger to come into their home or their house and occupy and chase them out of the house. Then if they chase you out of the house. When it rain, when you see this storm and it's about to rain. Where will you go? Where will you depend on? Where what will be your shelter there? Then that means all the rain will fall on your head.
Uh huh.
And that will put you in a, in what? You know, you'll be cold, you'll probably get sick, or the, but you die, because. You need a place you call home, you need a place where you, you know, where you have your shelter. And where you have your shelter, not just for you, your family member, Biafrans that life, so our home must be protected. So we must make sure that we don't allow these land grabbers. This invasion, uh, uh, this, uh, uh, people that have come to invade our land. Then when they go to UN or US, they start lying to them is because of climate change. Climate what? Biafran territory, actually, uh, when you go to the north, their land size or land mass is way more than Biafran. So all that who wish territory, they want to tell us that it's not enough for them. So please, let's all, all fight for our freedom, fund our freedom. It's time to kick these terrorists out of our land. So we don't want anything that we kill, you know, uh, break us down, that will never work. Now or never. Our leader must be free, thank you from here. Thank you, thanks, thanks, thanks everybody, thank you.